I now call to order the 2023 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Stoughton. This meeting is now in session. First, we're gonna have a pledge of allegiance to our flag. Please stand if you're able, and let's recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This before me is Michael LaFleur. Congratulations, Michael. We appreciate you coming in tonight. And now, if you please remain standing. Behind me, we have a special treat. We have the Old Stoughton Musical Society singing the National Anthem.
Can you hear me? Oh, there we go. Hello. We are the Old Stoughton Musical Society, the oldest musical society in the country. My name is Renee LeBlanc, and I am the director of this wonderful group. The Old Stoughton Musical Society has performed at least once a year since 1786, with roots that go back to 1762, and we are intimately connected with the town of Stoughton. Our founding fathers created the society in Stoughton at the house of Robert Capin at the corner of Park and Seaver Streets. Our director, E.A. Jones, designed the current town seal in 1892, and we are represented in that town seal by the musical lyre. We are honored to have this opportunity to sing for you tonight before the annual town meeting. Our next piece is "Chester," a Revolutionary War song that was written by William Billings. It was William Billings' singing school students that actually organized and created the Old Stoughton Musical Society. William Billings is considered the father of American choral music. You may be seated.
My eyes have seen the glory of the heart of the Lord. He is strengthening up the vintage where the bricks and brat have scored. He has blessed the faithful life in the star of all for so. His truth is marching on. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. His truth is marching on. I have seen him in the watchwords of a hundred separate caps. He appears again and also in the ink and cutes and dust. I can greet his righteous sentence by the dead and buried house. His day is marching on. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. His truth is marching on. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. His truth is marching on. Marching on. Marching on.
The last piece, there's the audience participation part. I'm sure you're all familiar with "God Bless America." When Jimmy and Holly invite you in, please join us with enthusiasm. Then, when they take you off, please stop singing. It'll feel natural. Thank you again for giving us this opportunity to sing for you tonight.
America, America, God shed His grace on thee. And have thy good friend brotherhood from sea to shining sea. Let us all come together far across the sea. Let us swear our allegiance to an land that's free. And let us all be grateful for a land so fair. As we raise our voices in a song of prayer. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the rivers, to the oceans where we fall. God bless America, my home sweet home.
Sing it again.
God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the rivers, to the oceans where we fall. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home, my home sweet home. God bless America, America, my home.
Thank you to the whole choir. We appreciate that. Renee LeBlanc, thank you very much for coming to see me. Where else do you get entertainment like that, ladies and gentlemen, right? Only at town meeting, and only in Stoughton. Right. And only at the beginning of a town meeting, right? I'm sorry, there's some certain things we have to comply with. All right, getting back to the meeting. This town meeting is being held in person at the Stoughton High School Auditorium at 232 Pearl Street in Stoughton. This meeting is also being broadcast live through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation. It is being recorded for future broadcasting. Next, I think I'd like to introduce State Senator Walter Timmeltie. He has a special citation. You have to turn the microphone on. Right up top.
Doesn't say a lot about my electronics prowess. In all seriousness, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, and to Mike LaFleur and to our Stoughton Musical Society. That was a rousing tribute to our great country, so thank you all very much. Tonight's my privilege to be here tonight to honor Bob Desmond. Would Bob come forward, please? Hello, Bob. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And good evening to you, Bob. This citation, Bob, has been honored on your behalf in the State Senate. You earn the records in the Senate Clerk's office now forever for your service. Thank you very much for your service here as a town meeting member and on FinCom. Doing great work for the town. It reads as follows: "Call Walter, Massachusetts, Bob, State Senate official citation. Being known as the Massachusetts State Senate, hereby extends its congratulations to Robert Desmond in recognition of your outstanding and dedicated service to the great town of Stoughton through your nine-year tenure on the Finance Committee, notably as Vice Chair and Member and Chair of the Community Events Committee. And be it further known that the Massachusetts State Senate extends its very best wishes, Bob, because we know you're not retiring and that you will be involved down the road, we hope and we trust, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the State Senate and attested to, and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. Bob, it's been signed by our Senate President, Karen E. Spilka, attested to by our Clerk, Michael Hurley, and offered by myself, one very proud State Senator for your service. So, Bob, thank you very much for your service and all you've done for all of us." Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words for us?
Well, I would. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I greatly appreciate it. First of all, I'll teach each and every one of you thank you for your service. This town deserves the very best, and through your efforts, we go all the way towards getting the very best for the citizens of the town. So, thank you. We will be undertaking our budget exercise in the State Senate the last week of May. So, any thoughts, suggestions, ideas, please, I'll never forget that I work for you folks. Please email walter.timmeltie@ma senate.gov, or you can always call myself at the office at 617-722-1643. But again, I'll never forget that I work for you folks. Your suggestions, your ideas, your thoughts, and your criticisms, I take them very seriously and I take them at heart. So, I thank you for your time. Mr. Moderator, thank you. Best wishes for a very productive town meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, Senator Timmeltie. Next, I'd like to introduce Chair of the Select Board, Deborah Roberts. Deborah?
Hello, everyone. It is my honor to read the recognition from Congressman Stephen Lynch to Mr. Desmond. Can you please step forward again? We just love you. Ooh, long nights and FinCom, right? Love it. The certificate, yes, two for two. A certificate of special congressional recognition presented to Robert Desmond in recognition of your service to the community of Stoughton from serving nine years on the Finance Committee, with three of those years as Vice Chairman. Chairman of the Community Events Committee and local sports coach displays your dedication to the community of Stoughton. Signed by Stephen Lynch, our congressman.
Thank you very much.
You want to say a few words?
Thank you, Deborah Roberts. All right, I'm going to introduce everybody up here at the table. I try to be quick about it, but it just takes a few moments. Down on my right, your left, we have Select Member Louis Jito. You can clap, it's okay. Round of applause. If I hopefully get this description right. Director of Development, Mark Tisdill. New Town Manager, Tom Coulter. Vice Chair of the Select Board, Steve Cavey. And you just recently met our Chair of the Select Board, Deborah Roberts. Member of the Select Board, Scott Carrara. And we have our beloved Town Council, Brian Winter. And on this side, we have our Town Clerk, Stephanie Carrara. And also, we have the Moderator's Secretary and Member of the Town Clerk's Office, Samantha Rego. Thank you, Samantha, for everything you do for town meeting and all the different meetings and the minutes. She takes a lot of the minutes. Next to her is Kelly Johnson, Assistant Clerk, Kelly Johnson. Further to her left is Town Accountant, Bill Rowe. Next to him is Vaughn Inokian, Chair of the Finance Committee. And next down the line is Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, John Enzavino. Then, in the audience, we do have School Committee members. Let me first introduce the Chair of the School Committee, Catherine Weiss. Stand up, Catherine. Go ahead, it's okay. You can take a bow. And the Vice Chair of the School Committee, hopefully I can pronounce this name right, Fabian Francois Morissette. Take a bow. And then, we have School Committee members, Amando Babosa. And we have School Committee Member Lindsey Kreckler. Lindsey, you can stand up, take a bow, go ahead. And we have Kristen Shannon. Is she here tonight? Nope. Okay. And then, we have Superintendent, Superintendent of the Stoughton Schools, Dr. Thomas Robb. Sorry, Tom, I just went through the whole list and you were right here. I'll go sit down now, okay? Thank you all for coming this evening. All right, couple announcements. Also, I'd like to introduce our new Deputy Moderator, Kamel Druze. Where are you, Kamel? Where are you, Kamel? There's you. Everybody puts a lot of work in. It's good to recognize people because they're here, they're doing the work, and making this job a little easier for me, too. All right, a couple announcements. At 7:30 every evening during town meeting, the Cushion Street doors are going to be locked. So, if you're not here by 7:30, you got to walk around to the tennis courts or the football field side to come in that way, okay? So, the security doors on the Cushion Street side will be locked at 7:30. All right? You can go out that way if you want. Who wants to leave tonight? Nobody wants to leave here this evening, right? This is a lot of interesting stuff. I'm getting the wrap-up sign. Let's go, let's go. I'm moving along, I'm moving along. All right. All right, and also, I was asked to tell people the password if you're using Wi-Fi tonight in the auditorium. The username is student, all lowercase, student, and the password is BKNIGHTS, or B-NIGHTS. BK-N-I-G-H-T-S, all lowercase. All right. Now, at this time, we need to make sure we have a quorum. Are we ready? All right. Going to call the precinct chairs. Precinct 1, Juan Fox, do you have a number for us? 13, Precinct 1. George Stilinski, Precinct 2. 19, Precinct 2. Matthew Callis, Precinct 3. 19, Precinct 3. Julie Jito, Precinct 4. 16, Precinct 4. Kamel Druze, Precinct 5. 16, Precinct 5. Christine Yakabuchi, Precinct 6. 16, Precinct 6. Diane Dolan, Precinct 7. 13, Precinct 7. David Sheehan, Precinct 8. 17, Precinct 8. Stand by for the count. We have in our audience 129 town meeting reps. We have enough for a quorum, more than a quorum. We will proceed with the business this evening. Just like to thank all the committee members of the Finance Committee, Intergovernmental Relations Committee, Musipal Operations Committee, and Musipal Regulations Committee for all the hard work they performed over the last couple of months, bringing this whole thing together and producing the documentation, and town employees putting all these documents together to form the warrant book here. All right. At this time... Did you want to say something, Deborah? Yeah. We'd like to hear from Select Chair Deborah Roberts again.
To just do it right from here. Oh, look at that. It is my pleasure to introduce you to our new Town Manager, Tom Coulter. Tom started about five months ago, and he hit the ground running, demonstrating his skills in risk management, overall leadership in operations. And if you saw the interview I had with Tom, this is a culturism. What? Facts are what? Facts are friendly! I was hoping that I would have some audience participation.
Facts are friendly.
Facts are friendly. Anyway, Tom, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I look forward to meeting each and every member, town meeting representative. As you know, as I know and appreciate, that town meeting is the purest form of government we have in this nation. This is where all the decisions are made. All of us are making recommendations and proposals, but you are the decision-makers in this room. I want to give you just a few brief comments about my first five months in town. Something I hoped would occur, but I didn't expect. And that is just how talented, hardworking, committed, and loyal, and smart your town employees are. I've really been wowed. I've acquired broken companies for a living, and I thought I had a wonderful team, and I did. You should be very proud of the team that serves this community. I'm very proud of them. I'm also grateful for and want to recognize the Select Board. Not every Select Board is like this, where they support their Town Manager, they give advice, they give counsel, they give real-time feedback. Like me, they believe in transactional honesty, so we have a two-way communication that is very functional, it's very productive. And we in this town have enormous challenges, as we're going to talk about later. We've also got very significant opportunities. It's because of this unique staff of town employees and this very unique staff of, excuse me, leaders in your Select Board that we are going to meet every one of those challenges, and we will leverage every one of those opportunities. Now, I want to tell you what I didn't expect, and I want you to listen closely, and especially at that curtain, when I ask you to look at that curtain. I knew that the people in town government, I served in state government for 12 years, were hardworking and loyal and kind and smart. What I didn't expect was for them to be so generous. And let me tell you why I say that. If any of you know Vice Chairman Cavey well, you know that he's a very kind and thoughtful people person. He's very compassionate, very empathetic, he's very kind, and he's very generous. What you may not know is he comes into Town Hall weekly just to check in on employees and oftentimes brings us wonderful treats. He's very thoughtful and generous on his part. A week ago, on his way into town meeting, excuse me, Town Hall, he went into a store to buy some muffins for all of us and some coffees. He came out and his bike was gone. It was stolen. Happy to report it's been recovered due to Stoughton's finest. Within a half an hour, a person came into my office and said, "Would you contribute to a fund? We want to buy Steve Cavey a replacement bicycle." And it was a $1,000 racing bike. So, I, you know, took out my wallet, as one would expect, and made my contribution. Four hours later, this lady came back and said, "We've raised enough money. We've bought Steve Cavey a bike, and we'd like to present it to him at town meeting." So, I'd like to show you. Steve, I hope you are never late in bringing our treats from now on. Thank you, everybody. It's a pleasure meeting you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. I hope we all get a bike, too, here, you know? All right, let's proceed. We're going to talk about procedural motions, procedural motions. Kamel Druze, can you step forward to a microphone? One second, Kamel. I just got reminded that we need to swear in any town meeting reps that have not been sworn in yet. If you have not been sworn in yet, please stand. This is Town Clerk Stephanie Carrara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Okay, if you want to raise your right hand and repeat after me, starting with "I," state your name. Okay. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of Town Meeting Representative according to the terms of the Town Charter, bylaws of the Town of Stoughton, and the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. All right, congratulations.
All right, thank you, Stephanie. Okay, procedural motions. These motions allow us to perform the... These motions allow us to, uh, perform the, the activities of town meeting with ease here. Kamel Druze, please read the first motion and then we'll ask for a second. Go ahead Kamel. Not yet, you gotta, up top?
This is why my son is the theater performer, not me.
Oh, it's son?
Yeah.
Ah, there you go.
Okay. So, first move to dispense with the reading of the warrant and the return thereof.
Is it, okay, moved and seconded, by voice vote, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it. Number two?
Move that no motions for reconsideration of any budget amount shall be in order until all departments have been initially voted.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor by voice vote, say aye? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Number three?
Move that amendments or substitute motions for any, for an article other than the operating budget be considered only if in writing, and further that any proposed substitute motions or complex amendments be delivered in writing to the moderator 48 hours in advance of the session at which the motion is to be made. Motions to be emailed to the moderator at b-mullin@stoughton-ma.gov and a copy to the Town Clerk at s-carrera@stoughton-ma.gov.
Okay, moved and seconded, by voice vote, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Number four?
Move to act on the articles as printed in the town warrant.
Moved and seconded, by voice vote, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Number five?
Move that no reconsideration of any article take place until the last article has been completed at town meeting.
Been moved and seconded, by voice vote, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Number six, the last one is?
Move that town meeting does not take up any new business after 10:30 PM.
Moved and seconded, by voice vote, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you all, thank you Kamel. All right. Next up. All right, uh, out on the table, and hopefully by email, you saw the, uh, consent agenda. Uh, trying to wrap up five of these articles into one, so we can just vote by simple majority, move the time ahead a little bit. These are five articles that I always don't have, have any debate really, we just move along. We propose them, we second them, and we vote them in. So this is the consent agenda. I'm gonna ask Mr. Carrera for a motion.
Move to accept the consent agenda one, as written and approved. Articles two, three, four, five, and 21.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Coleman, you have an objection?
Eric Coleman, precinct five, no objections, but last year I requested that the town reports have an index or a table of contents and page numbers. I'm requesting it again for the next year, 'cause it's not in this one. That's all, thank you.
Oh, thank you Eric. Okay, that article, consent agenda's been moved and seconded. We're gonna do a, uh... Mr. Cohen, please rise, if you can, use the microphone. I'm sure we can get one up there. Thank you for bringing it to my attention. I think, I believe Kevin's working on it right now. Okay, for new, again, I apologize, for new town meeting reps, we're gonna do a clicker test. Uh, the Town Clerk is gonna explain quickly the clickers. We'll do a quick test and we'll get back to the consent agenda.
Mr. Moderator, pardon me. Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
If I could, to the previous speaker, would you let me know what report you're looking for? Because page 723 in the book says town reports. So I'd just like to know which ones he's looking for. If you look at the table of consents, it says page 723, annual town meeting reports. So if the prior speaker could let me know after the meeting which ones he's looking for, we can try and take that up.
Thank you Ms. Anzavino. We'll take that offline after the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Stephanie Carrera?
Thank you. Okay, on your clickers, if you remember, and for everyone that's new, if you press the one, you will see a 1A come up. So, that'll mean that you will be voting yes. If you see a 2B, that'll mean that you're, you're pressing the two, you know, 2B will come up and that means that you're voting no on your, on that particular article. If you press three, you will get a three C. And when that comes up, that means that you're abstaining from the article. Don't push it now because you won't see it, because we haven't put up the poll. But after each article, we will be putting up a poll. And remember, press one for yes, two for no, and three to abstain. And you will have a letter after that. Please be aware that these have been, you could say, asleep since the last special town meeting. So you may get a battery symbol that might come up. Just keep clicking the number. It'll wake up the, um, it'll wake up the clicker. And just so you know, these have been tested today. If it didn't have a battery, we put new batteries in it. So there shouldn't be any problems, but if you do, just please come up to the desk and we'll reassign you a new clicker. Thank you.
We're gonna actually test the clickers, okay? My apologies. Don't worry, I will, will not quit my day job, okay? I'll keep my day job on this. All right, this is the test for the clickers. Go ahead and vote. You have 20 seconds. Three seconds, two seconds, one second. Everybody's, everybody understands how to vote. One yes, two no, three abstention, or abstain. All right, back to the consent agenda, please. Let's bring it up on the screen. It's back up there. Okay, we're, uh, everybody ready to vote? It's been moved and seconded. The motion was, which was seconded, move to accept consent agenda one as written and approve articles two, three, four, five, and 21. This is by clicker? Oh, standby, we have an active clicker. Can you click, you wanna vote now? All right. Okay, we're recording the vote right now. You ready? Okay, motion passes, 77 yes, one no, zero abstentions. Did you vote? No, it's okay, it passed. Okay. You what? Okay, well... Motion passes. What's that? Okay, well, can, can we start that again? Do you wanna re-vote? Okay, gives everybody a chance again. We're giving everybody a second chance here, second opportunities, opportunities will not be missed here. Let's queue it up again. I'm a little rusty here, it's been a while since I've been up here. I'll remind them after this. Are we ready to queue it up? Let me know. You ready to vote? All right, please go ahead and vote now. You have 20 seconds. Are we good? All right. Eight seconds left, seven. All right. The consent agenda passes, one 22 yes, three no, one abstention. I declare that a vote. All right, that's the first time we use the consent agenda, so thank you all for doing that. We can use that in the future too. Help us hopefully move some of these articles along. I was also asked to remind everybody to silence your cellphones. Uh, if you could, put them down low, put them off, whatever's easier for you. Okay? So now that we took, took up two, three, four, and five, and 21, thank you, uh, we're gonna move to Article Six. On page six. Everybody please turn to page six, Article Six. Deposits to stabilization fund. And for the new town meeting reps, and if it's a positive motion, the Chair of the Fincom will read the motion. Then we'll ask for the committee reports after that, and then the presenter of the motions. Do we have an issue with your clicker? Okay. Okay, Mr. Anokian, please read the motion.
That the town vote to deposit $320,452.24 to the stabilization fund and that to meet this appropriation, $320,452.24 be transferred from free cash.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, Finance Committee report, please.
Finance Committee voted 10 to 0 to accept and recommend to town meeting Article Six.
Thank you. The Speaker is Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. This is, um, something we try to do every year if we have the funds available, uh, to do so. Currently we have, um, uh, the stabilization fund requires two-thirds vote to take the money out. So it's kinda, it's a good savings account, it's, it's a good rainy day fund to have. Currently we have $6,155,013. So this will bring it up around six and a half million dollars. So, um, this helps with our bond rating and, um, you know, is there for emergencies. Thank you.
All right. Now we're in the, uh, we go to, uh, technical, or actually, uh, yeah, technical questions. Any technical questions? Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, Pat Colburn, precinct four. My question is, this article has always been the last for a reason, because throughout town meeting, we may move money, make a substitute motion. If, if we approve this right now, how much wiggle room is left, if any, uh, to the town accountant? What do we have to work with if we approve this upfront?
Mr. Rowe, can you answer that?
Well, 100% of the free cash and, uh, estimated receipts for next year have been allocated as part of the, um, uh, by the Finance Committee. So there would need to be amendment to one of those articles if we were to free up money. But all, all the available funds have been allocated for fiscal '24.
Thank you. Uh, would it be appropriate to make a motion now, or will that be the next at the debate stage?
Do you have a motion?
I would like to move that we, um, hold, table this article until the end of the budget, since we, um, need room to move if a substitute motion comes up on the floor.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table Article Six to the...
Till the end of the budget?
Into the budget process, which is Article 26.
Yes.
After that. Any, any discussion on that motion? Ms. Anzavino? Oh, one second. Hang on, just double-checking the book. No discussion on motion to table. Uh, what was the... Uh, Ms. Colburn, what was the motion again? Yeah, it was motion to table the end of the budget. Okay? Okay, it was seconded. Who seconded that, for the record? Mr. Garen? All right. Uh, we're gonna take that to a vote. Now let's, let's see, we can just move ahead and do a voice vote. So the motion to table Article Six, we're gonna do by voice. All those in favor to table that till the end of the budget, Article 26. Please say aye? All those opposed? All right, the moderator, uh, declares that's a vote for the ayes. So Article Six has been tabled. Okay, Article Seven, that is on page seven. Uh, Chair of the Fincom, Van Anokian, please, read the motion.
That the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law Chapter 44, Section 53 F and a half to appropriate the sum of $381,625 to fund the Cedar Hill Golf Course for fiscal year 2024, with $336,313 to be raised from FY 2024 Cedar Hill Golf Course revenue and $45,312 to be transferred from Cedar Hill Fund retained earnings for such purposes.
It's been moved and seconded, who seconded that? Mr. Garen, thank you. Finance Committee report, please.
Finance Committee voted 10 to 0 to accept and recommend to town meeting Article Seven.
Okay, now we move into the presentation. This is Article Seven. This is Victor Beruza. Mr. Beruza?
Good evening, Town of Stoughton, welcome to the big show. Um, this gets a little easier and easier each year. We had another phenomenal year, for those of you that don't know. Uh, we went to 534,000 to close out last year, and this year we are on track to do about 610. Um, we started at 7,000 rounds my first year in 2014, and we should close this year with 23,000 rounds of golf, uh, for a pretty substantial increase. Uh, the, the grill has worked out fantastic. They're doing a phenomenal job. Uh, they're bringing in golfers, they're bringing in, uh, folks from the town that don't golf. We have a whole new ownership in this golf course. Whether it be golfers or non-golfers, there's a lot of people that come up on a regular basis and are utilizing that property. And you should all be proud. Uh, so I thank you for all the support in the past and, uh, going forward. And if anyone has any questions, I'm game, I don't really have much else to say.
Thank you, Mr. Beruza. Anybody for technical questions? I'll see you none. Uh, if you do, obviously raise your hand, hold it up for a couple of seconds so we can see it. The, uh, people from the Clerk's office is gonna help me identify the people, we'll have you speak. Okay, the technical question period is over, now we go into pro-con debate. Any debate? See you none? Okay, we're gonna move to the vote. Can we bring that up on the screen? This is Article Seven. All those in favor, please vote. One, two, or three, one yes, two no, three abstention. Ten seconds left. Article Seven, motion passes, one 26 yes, two no, zero extensions.
Thank you, Stoughton.
Thank you. Moderator declares that a vote. Okay, moving on. Okay, Article Eight. That's on page nine of your warrant books, page nine. Mr. Anokian?
Proposed motion is that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law Chapter 44, Section 53 and a half to appropriate the sum of $878,274 to fund the Stoughton Public Health Association Enterprise for fiscal year 2024, with $843,240 to be raised from FY 2024 public health revenue and other available funds, and $35,034 to be transferred from the public health fund retained earnings.
Is there a second? Mark Z... Mark Zamanian seconded that, for the record. Finance Committee report, please.
Finance Committee voted 10 to 0 to accept and recommend to town meeting Article Eight.
Thank you. Janice Bruce? Is there any questions? If there's no technical questions, Mr. Jito, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Yes. It's unusual that we have the term "other available funds" without recognizing what they are. And I guess I'm wondering if we could have that. That occurs in Articles Eight, Nine, Ten, and Eleven, I believe.
Okay. Janice, would you like to make a brief presentation and maybe explain that?
No, I just wanted to say hello to everybody.
Sure.
Nice to see everybody this year. We've had another busy year. We've made about 3,000 home visits in the town this year. As you know, most of our visits are to the seniors in town. But we have accepted some additional insurances, which is great. We're trying to expand our insurance base. And the other activities that we do that we don't get reimbursed for by billing for them are public health activities. So we are a public health and a VNA. And the VNA portion is what brings in the retained earnings. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Jito, your question again, please.
Maybe Mr. Rowe or someone else could indicate what those other funds are.
Okay, Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bill Rowe Town Accountant. So if everybody turns to the next page, page 10, right at the very top. Since COVID, this enterprise fund has been hurt pretty significantly with its home care, the VNA and so forth, plus Medicare, the reimbursements, those have dropped a little bit as well. And we have to submit a balanced budget to the state. So what we're doing is we're supplementing those funds with the ARPA funds, so-called the American Rescue Plan Act, lost revenue with $328,512. That should not be part of the motion because it's grant money. We should not spell it out. But I wanted to illustrate that for you on page 10 at the top there. So we have appropriated retained earnings of 320,109. The Rescue Plan Act of 328,512. And then estimated receipts of 514,728 to make up the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jito, you're all sat? Okay, any other technical questions? Mr. Rock, please rise if you can to the microphone. State your name and precinct number, please.
Hi, everybody. John Rock, Precinct Three. My question is, how much do we have left in retained earnings for this enterprise fund?
Mr. Rowe?
Well, after this, we've used 100% of the retained earnings for this article.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for questions? Mr. Linehan, please rise, state your name and precinct number, please. You just have to turn the microphone on top, right at the top.
There you go.
There we go. John Linehan, Precinct One. So is this budget unsustainable beyond ARPA?
Mr. Calder, would you like to answer that?
The honest answer is yes. It's unsustainable. And that's why the Board of Selectmen will have before them a policy question as to what they're going to do with this department. Medicare, what Medicare covers has decreased significantly. What percentages they cover of procedures has decreased significantly. Private sector VNA's are going out of business, many of them, because of those two reasons. So the question we're going to have, the policy question the board is going to be presented with is going to have to answer is, does the town wish to subsidize healthcare for its seniors? It's really that simple. I would be misleading if I told you this was going to be profitable next year. It's not going to. But the subsidy that we're carrying is there because we provide the level of service that the seniors need and require. So that's really a policy question that the board is going to answer in the next few months. We've got a year to figure it out, or till next December to figure it out. And it's what this body is going to decide if they want to fund the subsidiary. I think everybody has strong opinions on the value of the program. I know I do. I greatly admire the work they do. But to be very candid, facts are friendly. It's a subsidy now. It's going to be a subsidy next year out of the town budget.
Where it comes from, yes.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Moderator, can I ask another question?
One more question, go ahead.
So is, this must be a challenge that other municipalities are dealing with? If these are rates that are decreasing, how are they dealing with them?
Well, Stoughton is one of only two town-owned VNA's in Massachusetts. There's been huge changes in healthcare. And it's becoming challenging as even if you look at our own insurances, the town's insurance, I mean, the costs are going up. And Medicare, which we're about a 90% Medicare agency, has, right when the pandemic hit in 2020, they gave us a new payment model, which whenever Medicare or CMS gives you a new payment model, it's usually not on the side of the organization. It's just, it's making it tougher. But I always would like to remind everybody that we are also public health. We do have a service with the VNA that we're able to provide skilled services to seniors or, and to some people that are not seniors but are covered under their insurance. And it's a really valuable service. If I look around this audience, I can see so many people that I know who's either family members have received services or if you look in your, just in your section, I'm sure there are people that you know of that have. When I think about, we brought in, I don't have the exact amount, 500 and something in revenues. And we, was about another $140 that we fell short. For $140 of being invested, and I know that doesn't count the indirect cost because we're an enterprise fund, but if we were just supported as in the general fund, that's not a, that's not a huge amount for the services that you're getting. And I just met with the town in Hanover because they support four nurses in their town and they don't bill for services. This is all public health. So they don't bring in anything. They just support the four nurses just under public health that go out and do, they don't do skilled under doctor's orders, but they do provide services if somebody had a small dressing that had to be done or blood pressures or whatever. So I just think it's a great service. I left out some information out there on the table. I have to kind of laugh because it's going back to the first pandemic and our first nurse. And it was a flyer that went around town asking to support her and taking donations from all the people in the town just so that she could last another year. And I thought, wow, things don't change much in 100 years because I feel like we're still looking for that money to sustain ourselves. But if you have a chance, they're out there. And it's really a good little insight into our first nurse back in the early 1900s. So I appreciate all of you. You've always been really kind. And I hope we can keep this organization going because it means a lot to a lot of people. And I've loved meeting so many people and providing services, so.
Okay, thank you, Janice. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing, Mr. Beliveau? Please rise and approach the microphone and state your name and precinct number, please, for a question.
Paul Beliveau, Precinct Three. So referring back to the last question about being sustainable. So the American Rescue Plan Act is what's funding a great deal of this?
I know Bill knows, I think it was 300,000. We had the funds to do that. So because it's public health, and I think it was related to COVID, that that money was, we don't normally have that.
Right.
But this year, it was able to be funded.
So I'm just curious going forward, but is it, like you said, is it sustainable?
Well, I had, I don't mean to talk about it. I had asked Bill Rowe maybe if, last year, if there was way as when the ambulance fund was taken out of an enterprise fund and just funded through the general fund. Is that a possibility? Is that something that the town would look at?
Hold on a second. Let's see, what was the question again, Mr. Beliveau? I'd just like to get his question answered for us.
I see that we receive a lot of funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. And referring to the previous question about this being sustainable, do we foresee something, you know, how are we going to maintain this going forward after the rescue act?
So after the funds are no longer there, you're saying?
Right, federal funds.
Okay, can we get an answer for that? Anybody answer that? Mr. Calder?
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. In round terms, Paul, because this is an enterprise fund, it gets charged indirect costs and like other departments in the town. So in round numbers, there's $300,000 of allocated indirect costs to this department. I call that, you know, fake money. If you were on any other department other than enterprise fund, you wouldn't be assessed that. The funds we got from the state are plus or minus $300,000. So wash those out. If we weren't an enterprise fund, the actual income, the deficit, the structural deficit is approximately $140,000. And that's, it'll be a little less next year because we're discontinuing subcontracted services for physical therapy. We don't get contract services. And also, and I'm really disappointed to announce this, Janice is retiring. And we're filling that position, as we do with a lot of departments, with existing staff. We're not going to replace, we can't replace Janice. So she'll be retiring in July. So the deficit will be smaller. The structural deficit will be smaller. I would say under $100,000, perhaps even under $50,000. But it's not going to go away because of these Medicare impacts. Again, so the policy question is at the, in the purview of the Board of Selectmen. And the funding question will be in the hands of town meeting members for fiscal year '25 and '24, if you choose.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Calder, moving on. Next up is Mr. Peter Ventresco. Oh, you have to wait your turn then. We'll come back to comments in about as quickly as we can. Peter Murphy, comment. Any other technical questions? Seeing none? Let's move right into comments. All right, Mr. Ventresco? Followed by Mr. Murphy, followed by Mr. Cohen. Anybody else? Just raise your hand so we can see. Mr. Ventresco, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Peter Ventresco, Precinct Eight. I'd like to say something in favor of these nurses. They're the angels to the elderly when it comes to health. And I've used them. I had them for my wife and myself. And I've used the private sector nurses, too. And believe me, these people are an A+. And I give them, private companies, a C. So no matter what it's going to cost, we owe it to the elderly of this town to give them the best support we can give them. And I highly recommend to this body here to fund the Stoughton VNA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ventresco. Next up is Mr. Peter Murphy. Please rise, state your name and precinct number, please.
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. I'd like to follow a previous speaker. Last year, I'm not sure if people recall, I came in here on a walker. I had suffered medical issues. The visiting nurses came out. They also had physical therapy. And with that, they got me back on the right track. One of the things I will say that if you go to hospitals outside of the area, you have to request Stoughton visiting nurses. And again, for them, it was very comforting to know that they're local. They knew people in the neighborhood and all that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Cohen? Can we bring a microphone to Mr. Cohen? You got one? Do you have your own?
I have one.
Could be dangerous. Mr. Cohen, please state your name and precinct number, please.
My name is Robert Cohen. I'm in Precinct Five. To the young people, this is nothing to you, the nurses, but when you get up into the ages of 55, 60, 70s, and 80s, you will damn well appreciate those people. I've had three years of some problems. And I have a problem now. They couldn't have been better. And a matter of fact, I was at the Baptist Hospital. The doctor says, I want you to start therapy right away. Put a call all pre-arranged. And the doctor said to me when I left, when are you starting physical therapy? I left on a Friday. And Saturday, the therapist was there. And let me tell you, I'm where I am today, and I owe it to her. I'm still in therapy, but not with the visiting nurses. And they are professionals to the word go. Amen and great retirement. You've done a great service to this town. And I personally want to thank you for what you've done to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Yes, please rise, state your name and precinct number, please. Take your time, it's all right.
Davina Owens, Precinct Four. I'm a young person in support of the visiting nurses. I just want to say, I do elder law and I help a lot of the elderly in Stoughton. The number one factor contributing to individuals needing, whether they need nursing home care medically, is whether or not they have home care. And that's either going to be provided by younger members of the family or by visiting nurses. And here in Stoughton, we have a gem of a visiting nurses program that is incredibly unique. Other areas around that don't have this service see their elders going into nursing homes 10, 20, 30 times more often than necessary. And you're looking at between 15, 20, sometimes upwards of $25,000 a month for medical care for your elders. So not that that's completely dispositive of the issue, but just in support. And thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, it's safe to move on? Let's move on. Eric, are you trying to tell me something?
Yes, Eric Coleman, Precinct Five. I move the question.
Okay. Question's been moved. That means cut-off debate. By voice vote, it's been, well, it's been seconded by Carolyn Campbell. By voice vote, all in favor of the cut-off debate, say aye. All those oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, we're going to move to the vote? It's up on the screen, Article Eight. Are we ready? We're ready, go. Please vote accordingly. One, two, or three? You have 20 seconds. And actually, it's 14 seconds now. Okay, Article Eight, motion passes. One twenty-nine yes, one no, zero extensions. Thank you all for voting.
Thank you.
All right, now we're on to Article Nine, Sewer Department Enterprise Fund Budget. That appears on page 11 of your warrant books. Page 11. Everybody there? Mr. Vaughn Anokian, please read the motion.
That the town vote pursuant to the provision of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F 1/2 to appropriate the sum of $8,238,669 to fund the sewer department for fiscal year 2024 with $8,238,669 to be raised from FY 2024 sewer enterprise revenue and other available funds.
Who seconded it? Elliot Hansen, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Finance Committee report, please.
Finance Committee voted 10...
Finance Committee voted 10 to 0 to accept and recommend to town meeting Article 9.
Okay, presentation, Mr. Kaby?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to propose that we amend the motion as follows.
Okay.
That the town vote pursuant to provision, General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 F 1/2 to appropriate the sum of $1,158,695 to fund the sewer department for fiscal year 2024 with $1,158,695 to be raised from fiscal year 2024 sewer enterprise revenue and other available funds.
Mr. Moderator, I think Mr. Kaby needs to check his numbers. He just went down to 1 million. He went down from 8 million to 1 million. I think he might want to recheck his numbers.
All right, could you please read your motion one more time, Mr. Kaby?
Sure, sure. So the number I have is 8158695.
Is that right, Bill? That is correct.
I heard 1 million, that's why I asked, that's why I asked him to reread it.
Okay, so let me just repeat that. The correct number on the bottom line is 8,158,695 even. We good on that? Okay. Do you want me to read that? Okay. Mr. Kaby, could you read your motion one more time?
Sure. That the town vote pursuant to the provision of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 F and 1/2 to appropriate the sum of $8,158,695 to fund the sewer department for fiscal year 2024 with $8,158,695 to be raised from fiscal year 2024 sewer enterprise revenue and other available funds.
All right, who, who seconded that for the record? Was there a second? Elliot, I'm sorry, Elliot Hanson? Don't be afraid, just raise your hand again. Okay, seconded by Elliot Hanson. All right, presentation?
So I will defer to, to both Bill Rowe and also, since we have Mr. McNulty here, if he's able to help answer questions. But with the, with the amended motion that I put on the table, there is the comment that the NWRA released a revised preliminary assessment that essentially lowered the, our assessment by $78,940. And so we are, we need less money for this account and so we're asking for, for less to be, to fund this account.
Yeah, what was the reduction in the budget? Could you read that comment again? I'm sorry.
I'll read the full comment. The NWRA released a revised preliminary assessment of $5,807, sorry, 7, 5,807,975, resulting in a reduction to the budget of $79,974, making the new appropriation necessary to fund this account, $8,158,695, plus indirect costs of 50, sorry, $525,545 for the budget total of $8,684,240.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Are there any questions? Technical questions, okay, we need. All right, Pat Colburn first. Please state your name and precinct number.
Pat Colburn, Precinct 4. On three, Mr. Moderator, to select board member, Mr. Kaby. The 79,000 reduction, that's reducing the subsidy, correct? That's not being, being spent elsewhere in the budget?
When we get, well, I'll let, probably Bill should answer this, so I'll defer it to him.
Through you to the town accountant, is the 79,000 reduction reducing the deficit, the subsidy, or is it being spent elsewhere?
There's going to be an amended motion for Article 26, the general fund operating budget, yes, to reduce that subsidy.
Okay, and my second question is, I don't want to turn this into a rate discussion and get gavelled, but a subsidy of 858,000 is way too much money. And as somebody who's on septic, not sewer, it's a little hard to swallow with as much of a subsidy. Is there going to be a rate conversation, a meeting, something to discuss this? Is there a plan going forward?
Can anybody answer that?
Answers yes.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, Phil McNulty, Stoughton Water and Sewer Superintendent. My, my understanding is this June, there will be a discussion on rate adjustments to address that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colburn. Mr. Gito, please state your name and precinct number.
Lou Gito, Precinct 4.
You got to use the microphone?
Lou Gito, Precinct 4. The same question on this article and the next ones, which is, what are the other funds? The reason that I'm asking this question is because these enterprise accounts are all in deficit and we should know that and we should know where the money is coming from in order to fund these things until such time as we deal with, with the water and sewer rates and other things. So that's my question, was asked before for all three of these, so I don't want to have to do it again. So when we get to the next one, let's just get to it.
Well, Mr. Gito, all due respect, I'm going to ask you to, for each article, I ask you to repeat the question.
Thank you, I'll repeat it.
Just for clarity, for everybody in the stands. Okay?
I'll do that. Thank you so much.
No, you're welcome. Who can ask Mr. Gito's question? Available funds? Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. So if you turn to the next page, again, page 12, in the last column has a breakdown of the receipts. We have estimated receipts and appropriated retained earnings, which is the, like the free cash in the enterprise fund. And that comes to 7,825,663. And then the next few lines are the budget, the, the costs appropriated in the sewer fund, costs appropriated in the general fund. And then you come down and at the very bottom, that's 938,551, a general fund subsidy. So that can't be appropriated as part of Article 9 because it's appropriated as part of Article 26. But the additional amount is 938,551. And then there'll be amended motion to bring that down to 858,577 when we get to Article 26. So it's basically retained earnings, estimated receipts, and a general fund subsidy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowe and thank you, Mr. Gito. Any other technical questions? Bob Cohen first. Then Paul, you're next.
Bob Cohen, Precinct 5. How much is the deficit? I can't find it. What is the deficit for this year?
Anybody able to answer this question? Bill?
Well, we had, we didn't have an operating deficit because we had used retained earnings. So we didn't have an operating deficit for, but as far as using retained earnings, but as far as using the revenues versus expenses. So if you just look at the revenues versus expenses, we had a surplus of 35,000. Not much.
But how much is the deficit? They did show deficit spending. How much? You telling me that they made $35,000 in the sewer account?
In, in '22, yes.
How about '23?
Now, wait a second, hold on, I'm looking at the wrong report here, sorry. So in fiscal '22, we had, we spent 178,850 more than we took in. So when you add all that together, it diminished our retained earnings, diminished our surplus by that amount. So that we only wound up with, you know, 388,000, as was other years, we've had close to a million, so. And...
We haven't raised sewer in quite a bit either.
When you put together the budget for next year, we can't estimate revenues higher for '24 than they were for '23, so we're winding up with a, you know, an 800, $930,000 deficit before the, before the amendment.
That's a lot of money. A lot of money for people that don't have sewerage, that wanted sewerage, that have to pay this deficit too.
Is there a question there, Mr. Cohen?
No, I just want someone to answer me a question. Who pays the deficit? Is it the people with the sewerage or the, all the whole town pay this deficit?
The, the general fund is subsidizing this before the reduction that we just got. It was subsidized by 938,551 from the general fund. And that doesn't, never mind that you use 388, 387 from retained earnings. You're still about a million and a quarter that you're putting into it.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment or do I make a comment later on?
You make a comment later on. Mr. Coulter, did you want, let's have Mr. Coulter.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you. John, I thank you for that number, it was 938. The gentleman asks, what is the, the structural deficit? Take it, forget about how we fund it, how we backfill it, how we fill the hole. What is the business's structural deficit? Meaning, the expenses are higher than the revenues and that's 938,000. We're going to revisit that again on the Water Department and I'll get back to sewer because the rate hearing that the board will have in a month or so is going to have to address that because the general taxpayers are paying that subsidy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Okay. Mr. Rowe, did you want to add something?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. For, for those town meeting members who might be new, we have five what are called enterprise funds. There's a business type enterprises. So we have a budget and then the money that comes in, it doesn't go into the general overall part of the town, okay? It goes into the enterprise fund to be spent for those purposes for the enterprise fund. So if we don't have enough estimated revenues to meet the budget that y'all vote here, then we have to fund it with some other way to balance the budget for the state. So unfortunately, we have to, you know, we have to do that for the sewer fund to the tune of, you know, around 900,000. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. All right, Mr. Paul Bellevue, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Paul Bellevue, Precinct 3. The decrease in the, from the MWRA, how, how do they calculate that decrease?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. It's, it's called a flow share. And the entire greater Boston, whoever is on the system, basically our sewerage goes out of town through Canton and ultimately reaches Nut Island in Quincy and goes to Deer Island in Boston or Winthrop. And they take, we measure the flow that leaves our town and they compare that against all the other greater Boston cities and towns. And they assess a, you know, they have a, they have an entire bill they have to pay and they, they break it out by percentage. Ours happens to be about 1% of the overall MWA budget.
So we do measure the exact amount of flow out of the town of Stoughton?
The reason we were able to reduce it by 79,000 is because we went back and forth on getting a better measurement.
I just wanted to verify, that's how we do it. Thank you.
One thing I'd like to add is when other towns do better, we do worse. So we need, we only, we need to not only keep up, but actually do better in, in order to reduce our flow share.
Thank you.
Okay, we're still in the technical question period. Maximanian, I think was next? Who was first?
I'm not going to say. Mark, do you want me to go?
I'll go. David Lurie, Precinct 6.
Go ahead.
I have two questions. I guess the first one might answer the second or not, I don't know. So if we did not even have the amendment, where would the $80,000 go? Does it go to, would it end up in retained earnings or would it still show up into our general fund or free cash, whatever? Like is the, is the purpose to capture this for free cash so we could use it somewhere else? Because otherwise it would go to retained earnings? I'm trying to just understand why we need a motion.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Since it's an enterprise fund, it stays within the sewer enterprise budget, either as retained earnings and spills over to next year or within a...
Oh, just for clarification, so that 80,000 stays within the, in the sewer department? It doesn't become freed up?
Correct.
Cash for something else?
That's correct.
Okay, because I just, my second question was going to be, what is the process here? Because in order to just change the main motion to save 80,000, it seems like a lot of work in order to just capture 80,000. It's just, it doesn't cost 80 extra, so the money just comes back. I didn't understand why you had to go through a lot of work in order to get it. So I'm not sure if anybody could answer that, but as I've never seen a motion like this before, that's why.
So where it shows up is, there's a line item in the sewer budget called MWA assessment. And it's usually in the 5 million plus range. Last year was 5.4, this year it was 5.8. So we got that from 5.8 down to basically 5.7.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Maximanian. Please state your name and precinct number, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Maximanian, Precinct 1. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Phil. So we have a $938,000 deficit in this account, is that correct? In the enterprise? Correct, Bill? 938,551, right? So why not use the 75, 79,000 and reduce the deficit?
Who can answer that? Okay, Bill Rowe?
So we're, we're going to be a, that's what this motion does. It reduces the budget by 79, 974 and that will consequently reduce the general fund subsidy by the, by the same amount as part of Article 26 when that amended motion is made.
Which will free the money up for the general fund, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Mr. Garren.
Jim Garren, Precinct 6. I've got a question now about when, I think I've read somewhere in the, in the warrant that the delinquent taxes in the town are somewhere in the vicinity of $4 million. I'd like to ask Mr. Rowe, how much of, how much of delinquent taxes do we have each year?
We collect, we collect some, we add on some each year. They usually add it on in July or August after the tax bill, the final tax bill due date. The first, first step would be to go into what's called tax title. We register a lien with the Registry of Deeds and then try to collect from the property owner. And then after a while, if, you know, they haven't made arrangements to pay, then the treasurer will, will put it into tax foreclosure and then we take over the property, so.
Well, I guess my question really is, is when there is delinquent taxes or when there are delinquent taxes every year, how is that apportioned through the real estate and then the water and then the sewer and then the trash accounts?
So if there are liens, tax title liens from water and sewer, when those are collected, we allocate that to the general fund or to the enterprise funds. So we have water tax title, for example, we have sewer tax title and we have general fund real estate tax.
I understand, but when you're, when you're calculating the, the deficits in each of these accounts, how, how much of...
Mr. Garren, just, right now we're just on the sewer, so just...
Okay, well, okay, yeah. It's going to come up in all of them, but how much of that delinquent taxes is apportioned to the sewer?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, probably, well, maybe I do. Hold on a second.
I'm trying to get to the deficit in the sewer and see if none of it is going to the sewer, or all of it is going to the sewer or the waters.
Yeah, so the deficit, we, under the, under the accounting system that we have, we, we don't use generally accepted accounting principles. We have a state system, a uniform Massachusetts accounting system. So we don't count the receivables. We, we only count the money as revenue when it's collected, not when it's booked. So I, let me take a look here. So, as far as tax title, it's about two point four million. Thirty-one thousand, thirty, roughly thirty-two thousand of that is sewer, sewer liens.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Garen. Mr. Murphy, please state your name and precinct number.
Peter Murphy, precinct two. Question I have is, we spent somewhere around seven million dollars on extension of a sewer line down Turnpike Street. Can anybody tell me, have we seen any revenue from that, and how many businesses have signed up on sewer line?
Can anybody answer that?
So, the status of the, I can let Mark talk. The status of the project, it's not fully constructed yet. There's still the pump station to install, so the, the connections have not actually been made at this point.
Do you have commitments from companies to tie into that?
We, we've had a lot of people come in, at least two dozen people come in. They want to connect as soon as they can. They wish they could connect now. Their, their septic are currently failing. The sewer project will be complete probably September, October. There's been some back ordered parts, as we all are aware, generators, pumps, things of that nature. Should be online September, October. That particular project is reflected in that number. It's about two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, for this particular year. Once that project goes online and we issue the betterment, that number goes away, well, I'm sorry, gets reduced. And as we collect more sewer revenue with people connecting, obviously, it gets lower and lower and lower. So, of the, what is it, one, nine thirty-eight plus three, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, I think it's about two, two fifty, Bill. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's being for debt service? That's right. Yeah.
So, you're saying that that...
Mr. Murphy, you had two questions already. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Kirby, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Yes, Bob Kirby from precinct six. The water and sewer superintendent mentioned that in the sorting out of this deficit in the future, perhaps next year, when they make a rate hike adjustment, that there would be, you know, some advancements in rectifying this persistent deficit. Will there be a consideration for those homeowners that are on septic rather than sewer in the rate hike adjustment? And if not, what is the rationale for that, considering that sewer adherents have onerous financial demands for Title V compliance, the regulars, septic pumping each year and so forth? So, their, their costs are substantially higher, maybe ten, fifteen times higher than the average septic user. So, what is the plan going forward when you talk about, you know, a rate hike adjustment? Will there be consideration for the septic versus sewer uses, users when you get to that point? And if not, what's the rationale for that?
Can we have an answer to that from anybody?
I'm not sure I quite understand the question. If you're on septic, you're on septic.
Right, but, but we've had an operating deficit in terms of maintaining the water sewer program for the town. You're, you're going to rectify that eventually with a rate hike that fully takes care of the water sewer budget. But this deficit cleanup and going forward, will there be a rate hike adjustment that balances out the, the share of the expense for people who are using septic versus sewer in the town? Say, I don't know what the percentage of, of Stoughton residents are that are on septic versus sewer. Perhaps you know that number. But if, if twenty percent of the constituency is on septic and eighty percent are using the, the sewer, you know, is that going to be reflected in the new rates as it's reassessed going forward?
So, the answer is, through you, Mr. Moderator, the answer is about seventy, thirty split. So, the, any adjustments would kind of be twofold. The one that Mark mentioned where the betterment fees will, you know, diminish and additional collections. So, hopefully, that'll buffer some of the rate increases that are necessary. The rest of it will have to be made up with rate increases. And so, someone on a septic would not be part of that. There would be, you know, as you, you know, pump it out three times, once every three years and rebuild it every thirty years type of thing. So, I wouldn't be part of that.
So, so in essence, their rates should be lower?
Yeah, Mr. Coulter?
I, I think, I'm going to try to clear it up. If you're on septic, you don't pay for sewerage.
Right.
Zero. So, there's no change if you're on septic on these water rates?
So, so the, the rate isn't going to somehow absorb the cost, like, I guess, because I was thinking the whole rate might be adjusted in some way to try to capture this deficit. But they're going to, to keep it distinct.
The only way septic system homeowners are impacted right now by, by sewerage is that the sewer is requiring a subsidy which is paid for out of the general fund, which ends up costing taxpayers. I think, Mr. Moderator, I can capitalize this thing very simply.
Please do.
You've got a water fund and a, and a water enterprise fund and a sewer enterprise fund. The water enterprise fund has a structural deficit of eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars a year, expenses exceeding revenues. The sewer enterprise fund has got a structural deficit, expenses exceeding revenues, of one million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars a year, this year. Combined, you know, you're somewhere around one point one million dollars. There are two point one million dollars. There's a variety of ways of solving that donut hole. The first one is if it had retained earnings, you can use those retained earnings to close that. We're running out of retained earnings in those enterprise funds. The second way is to use subsidies from the state, like the MWA fund or, or other funds that, that we may have built up over the years. We're running out of those funds. We're getting to the point where the staff has calculated the structural deficit, and next, we had a public hearing four weeks ago to announce to the town at the direction of our board that we've got a problem. Remember the old Apollo thirteen, Houston, we've got a problem? We've got a problem. And it hasn't been addressed for over ten years because of COVID, because of people's financial situations. We now have to pay the piper. The town is using over a million seven, I believe, in free cash to balance our budget. That's a no-no. Our bond rating is at risk. The way we get off that is to stop subsidizing the enterprise funds. So, the board hasn't had anything to do with this yet. We're presenting the data to the board next week, and we're not proposing any particular rate increase. We're telling them what their cost to make it break even is going to be. And that's what we did in the public hearing, so people should know that. When it comes to them, they have to make the hard decisions as to how we're going to get these two enterprise funds to break even and get off the general fund subsidy to fund these two enterprise funds. I hope that clarifies it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Okay. Elliot, can we kind of wrap up the questions? Sure. Please rise, Mr. Elliot Hansen, and state your name and precinct at the microphone.
Yes, it, it's on. The water rates, is there, is there a separate article for just the water rates? Because the question I have is this, is if we're going to have, we have water in everything.
Uh, Mr. Hansen, if this is on water, you're going to wait.
Going to wait?
This is on sewer only.
All right.
I just want to stick with Article nine. We can get to Article ten in a moment. Mr. Lenahan, please state your name and precinct number. If this is on sewer.
John Lenahan, precinct one. So, I know there've been a number of times when our INI money that we passed in town meeting has not been all spent. And I have to imagine that there's a lot of infiltration into our sewer lines that we're paying for. And are we spending all that money? Are we, you know, maximizing our control of infiltration into our sewer lines from groundwater to minimize what we're paying?
That's a great question. It, it's part of this. It's, it's what we use, the INI article that you see every year, which will come up, which will come up later. It, it's eventually spent. It's, it's compiled or co...
Uh, please use the microphone if you're going to make any more comments. Thank you.
It's compiled and coiled together to form projects each and every year. There's, there's a regular cycle we have between investigation, design, and construction. It's automatic every year. And we prioritize the heavy leakers and structural deficit, structural issues with pipes and manholes. So, you know, depending on the exact scope of the work, the amount we use from different articles, but it's all there in a pool that we, we utilize. The intent of that is to keep, you know, the clean water mixing with the dirty and paying a higher price.
Okay, let's move on. Mr. Anzavino has a quick question.
Quick question. John Anzavino, precinct four, finance committee vice chairman. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the board. When you set your new rates, if you do change the rates, that's going to be in effect for FY twenty-four, is it not?
Who can answer that?
So, if you increase the rates, you're going to be getting more money in, and that's going to be for the FY twenty-four year. So, where's that money going?
Let's have Mr. Coulter answer your question then.
Absolutely. We couldn't budget it that way because town meeting hasn't proved it yet. But absolutely, uh, excuse me, the, the Board of Selectmen haven't voted the rate increase yet. This will be done before July first, the rate increase hearing. Any money that comes in as a result of that decrease will reduce the subsidy, subsidy substantially. If we, if we decide, if we, if the board decides to increase the rate and suspend it over two years, then it will be balanced in two years. If they do it over three years, we balance it three years. If we balance it, if we adopt a rate that balances it in the one year, then you, in theory, are a hundred percent right, John. We will not have subsidies in water and sewer.
Well, I, let me rephrase it then. If you raise the rates and you bring in an extra five hundred thousand dollars this year, where's that money going?
It's an enterprise fund. It must stay within the enterprise fund.
Why wouldn't it reduce the subsidy from the general fund?
If we balance the budget and remove the structural deficit, there will be no subsidy required from the general fund. All money in the enterprise fund must stay within the enterprise fund, as you know.
But we already have general funds going into this account. That's, that's the question I have. Yeah, because if you raise the rates, what's going to happen?
Oh, John, you, you asked like four questions now. Well, to me, it's, it's four questions.
So, through, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You want to?
If the rate policy that's adopted by the board next month, it's the first order of operations after this town meeting, to remove, to balance the structural deficit, to increase the rates in water, sewer, and not to be ruled out of order, solid waste, huge deficit, if the policy decision is made to balance that in one year, you are so right. It'll hit in FY twenty-four. It'll balance those enterprise fund. There'll be no need for a subsidy. Think of how this plays out. The subsidy goes back into the operating budget, which we can use to reduce our dependence on free cash. It all gets fixed by, by getting rid of the subsidies. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coulter. Thank you, Mr. Anzavino. Mr. Rowe?
So, for budgeting purposes, we have to come up with an estimated revenue for this town meeting for the budget. So, at the end of the year, when we compile all the revenues for fiscal twenty-three, we may have more or less revenues than what we estimated here. If we have a special town meeting in the fall, and the, the rates have been raised, and I can justify the DOR, hey, we raised the rates X percent, we're going to, we expect to collect this much in fiscal twenty-four, then we can reduce the subsidy at a special town meeting, if the town meeting decides to do that. So...
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Do we have one more question, or is it the pro and con? Ms. Sewer, please state your name and precinct number.
Mark Sew, precinct two. You're telling us that we have a deficit. How are we to vote tonight without adding to that, or how does this work?
Okay, what's your first question?
How do we vote when we know there's a deficit? If we vote yes on this article, do we increase the deficit? How do we vote?
Mr. Coulter, would you like to answer that?
No, ma'am. You have a balanced budget before you.
Excuse me?
You have a balanced budget before you. So, the, the subsidies that are anticipated in two thousand twenty-four, starting July one, are incorporated, are baked into this budget already. What we're saying is that when we do the rate hearings, which is not part of this town meeting, that's a public hearing of the Board of Selectmen, when they vote to adjust the rates, depending upon at what level they adjust it, there's a chance that that subsidy that's impacting this budget that you're approving this evening will go away. And if it goes away, that's approximately two million dollars in cash in FY twenty-four that we're using from various sources to close the subsidies. The subsidy will go away.
Shouldn't those raises or decisions have been made before this body met so that we know what we have to spend and what we don't?
We know from this budget what we have to spend to pass a balanced budget. It's pinned together for money from various resources. This problem has existed for a decade or more. The finance, I mean, the Board of Selectmen directed me day one, figure out the structural deficit so that we can fix it. They were all on board to fix it. It's existed for over more than a decade when rates weren't increased along with, to track our costs.
So, it'll be fixed after, not now, but after?
Not by design, but we've been working for this town meeting and working every, meeting every Tuesday instead of every Tuesday, every other Tuesday. It's not like it was left behind. It's that we've been preparing for this meeting. But there will be a public hearing shortly after this town meeting is over to address this problem. It's all upside. It's all upside. People will pay exactly what our costs are to run water and sewer, and the taxpayers will be relieved of having to subsidize those enterprise funds. The balance, the budget you have in front of you is balanced. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. All right, I think we had a lot of technical questions. Let's move on. Pro and con debate. Is there any? This is on pro and con debate. Mark Zemanian, please state your name and precinct number.
Mark Zemanian, precinct one. We had a previous speaker ask the question, if there was a reduction by seventy-nine thousand dollars, does that stay within the enterprise fund? The answer was yes, the money stays in the enterprise fund. I asked the question about the budget for that very same reason, and was told that the money would go into the general fund, which would free it up for other spending. We have a hundred and twenty-four million dollar budget before us, ladies and gentlemen. Going to vote no on this. We have a serious structural deficit to begin with on this, on this particular item. And this feels a lot like robbing Peter to pay Paul. So, thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Walsh, do you want someone to hand the microphone to you? Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three, move the previous question.
Okay. This is just on the amended motion that's on the floor, okay? The amended motion only. So, most, Cynthia Walsh made a motion to move the question. It's cut off debate. It's been seconded. Who seconded that, by the way?
I did.
I think Scott, he was closer. I heard him off my right ear. Scott Carrara, right? All right. Moved in second. This is going to be by... This is gonna be by voice vote, cut off debate. All those in favor of cutting off the debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. All right. Again, this is only on the amended motion, it should be up on the screen. There it is. All right? So we're clickers in hand, are we ready? This is voting on just the amended motion. Please vote accordingly, one, two, or three. And then we're gonna go back to the regular motion, or the main motion.
Can we ask one question?
Six seconds. Five, four, three, two, one. All right. Motion passes 98 yes, 26 no, three abstentions. So the amended motion passes. Now we go back to the main motion. I think we pretty much questioned the heck out of it. So let's just bring it up for a vote, okay? Any objections? Seeing none, hearing none?
No.
No. All right, I gotta have, do you mind resolving that? I'll ask town council just to clarify that for those people that don't believe me.
So, Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting, Brian Winter, Town Council's office. There was a substitute or a motion to amend made. Town meeting just voted that and passed that. So now the main motion has been amended, and town meeting still has to take a vote on the main motion as amended. And that's what the moderator, not to put words in your mouth, sir, is calling for at this point.
Right, okay. So all we have to do is either, we're just gonna vote on this main motion, which is Article... I don't see it up on the screen anymore. Okay, just, just take a moment. Now this is on Article Nine, the main motion. Brian, have we got to say, main motion as amended?
Yes, main motion as amended.
All right, so this will be vote on the main motion as amended, the reduction by Mr. Steve Cavey's motion. Hopefully that's very clear. That's clear to me. Okay? Is it up on the screen yet? Not yet. Okay, we're voting on Article Nine to accept the main motion as amended. All those who want to vote, please vote now. One, two, or three. Article Nine, motion, main motion passes 105 yes, 20 no, one abstention. I declare that a vote. All right. We're gonna move on, Article Ten. That appears on page 13 of your warrants. That's the Water Department Enterprise Fund Budget. Mr. Von Anoki, can you read the motion, please?
That the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 F and 1/2, to appropriate the sum of $5,077,579 to fund the Water Department for fiscal year 2024 with $5,077,579... You were... Water Department Enterprise Revenue and...
Okay.
Mike's broken, sometimes it's not.
You wanna swap mics with Ms. Anzavino, just read it one more time for the...
I can speak loud if you want.
Okay, everybody okay with that? All right, is there a second?
There already did.
Who's second? Oh, I didn't hear you with all that confusion over there. Seconded by John Anzavino. All right, it's made and seconded. Can we have the report, please? Finance Committee report?
Finance Committee voted 10 to 0 to accept and recommend to town meeting Article Ten.
Thank... Okay, motion. Yeah, we just need the proposed motion on the screen. We have the article. One minute, please. Thank you for your patience, everybody.
Mr. Rowe, could you please explain the other available funds? Because I know it will be asked. While we're waiting, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Is that okay with you, Mr. Jito? We're gonna have an explanation of available funds. Yes, okay.
So again, if you turn to the next page, there's a breakdown right at the top of the page in the last column. We have estimated receipts of $4,634,722. Then we have $1,289,836 estimated to come from the, what's called the MWRA Infrastructure Fund. So the MWRA Infrastructure Fund was set up by the town through special legislation with the Commonwealth, Chapter 106 of the Acts of 2006, and later amended in 2018. And that money can be used, without appropriation by town meeting, it can be used by the Select Board as water commissioners, not sewer, just water, to transfer that money into the Water Enterprise Fund, or it can be used for water capital items. And that, that infrastructure fund has been financed by what are called tax increment financing agreements. They'll be expiring in 2026. They're all about 20 years old, so 2025, 2026, those will be expiring. So it's, it's finite money, but the Selectmen can, we're hoping that, and we can defer that until we find out what we have for revenues at the end of the year. But for now, we have to estimate that it's gonna be $1,289,836 that the Select Board would have to transfer into the Water Enterprise Fund in order to balance the budget. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McNulty, any further presentation on that, if you so desire?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Just briefly, in terms of salaries, they're down 2.6%, and expenses are up roughly 2% mainly due to chemical water treatment costs, hydrants and pipe costs, and just other various costs that are just going up. Overall, the budget's up about 3% and almost entirely due to the indirect costs increase. And as you just heard, Mr. Rowe outlined, how the deficit is gonna be made up through the MWRA program.
Okay, thank you very much. Technical questions, anybody? Mr. Rock, please rise, state your name and precinct number.
Mr. Rock, Precinct Three. My question is, are we still paying fees to the MWRA? And if so, how much? And I guess a secondary question, it would be, are we self-sufficient with our wells? Those are my two questions.
Sure. Okay, who can answer that?
Mr. Moderator, we, historically, we paid an entrance fee of about $432,000 per year. That has now been paid up. I think we paid the last three years, a few years ago, altogether, one lump sum. The other, the other part of that was the construction costs, those are also paid. As of right now, the only thing we pay for is the water we use. And that's been diminished by about a million per year because our well supplies are plentiful for us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lanahan, please state your name and precinct number.
John Lanahan, Precinct One. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, wouldn't we be better off investing these MWRA infrastructure funds in preventing leakage of the water coming into town and not having shock therapy in 2026 that's gonna kill my kids and if I'm still around me? But it just seems like we shouldn't put off the inevitable to, we should invest now for the future.
Can you repeat that, invest what?
Investing the MWRA infrastructure funds in preventing leakage out of the water coming into town and being distributed through town. Again, the I and I stuff that I was talking about earlier.
Yeah. So just a point of clarification, the infiltration part is on the sewer side.
Okay, but you have leakage out of the feed pipes.
Yeah, I mean, you could have leakage in the, in plumbing systems, if you will. It's a large plumbing system.
Sure we do.
We minimize that. If we were to go entirely MWRA, as it is right now, in the summer months, we, our demand is about 3 million gallons a day. We can only get 1 million a day out of that. So no matter how you slice it, we're gonna need our own sources.
No, I understand, it's, I guess it's more of a general question, preventing the waste as opposed to paying for it, investing in, in preventing the waste, whether it be MWRA water, MWRA water, or our own internal water sources. It just seems like 2026, this is gonna run out, and there's gonna be a huge increase in our water.
Yeah, so the state keeps an eye on us, how we, we do that for exactly that reason, conservation and preventing waste. Last year, our unaccounted for water, which would be considered lost water, waste, if you will, was 2%. This year, it was 8%. Generally, the state looks at below 10% as being excellent. So we're kind of on the excellent side right now.
Okay. Mr. Coulter, did you wanna add anything?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, as we get to know each other, you'll get to know me as a plain-talking person. Perhaps I'm not bright enough to talk intellectually, but this town meeting actually did something very prudent, and you should congratulate yourself for it. Over the last decade, you helped, you agreed to support multiple improvements in your water underground infrastructure. The debt service on that is $2.2 million a year. Due to that investment, you're now able to generate your own water, and more importantly, distribute it through pipes that can handle it. I'm making this up, but some of our pipes go from eight inches down to three inches because of years of, of work and corrosive. Some of them are 100 years old. Now here's the problem. You've got debt service of now $2.2 million on that infrastructure, and you've got decreased water from MWRA, which was your goal. Over the last 10 years, it's gone from $1.2 million a year to about $100,000 a year. Congratulations, that's real progress. But as you know, the difference between the two is $1 million. And that is approximate, approximately our structural deficit. So with the rate increase, there are so many good things that you've approved and that Phil has done in water and sewer that are gonna fix, that are gonna serve your younger generations, our children and grandchildren. They were prudent decisions, and I congratulate you for it. But we didn't do the corresponding rate increases to pay for it. Once we fix the rates, we will not be talking about these problems next year or subsidies. Next year.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up is Elliot Hanson. Please state your name and precinct number.
Elliot Hanson, Precinct One. Geez, sensitive mic. I know, I'm not sure about the rates, the water rates that we're paying. I know we've, we've increased the metering and, and straightened out some flaws in that. What I'm, I guess the question I have is, are the rates based on the type of use of, for instance, a household of, of few people, don't generate as much sewage, we'll say, as, as a industrial complex? So are there two tiers or several tiers for the rate for the water? And incidentally, the sewage? That's, that's my technical question.
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Sure, Mr. McNulty, go ahead.
So as, as part of renewing our Water Management Act permit, which used to be every 20 years, it's now 10 years, within that, there's stipulations that we have to abide by a conservation-based rate structure. In other words, the more water you use, the higher the rates to encourage conservation. So does that answer your question?
Okay, thank you. Let me just see who's next. Bob Cohen's next, then you, Jim. Mr. Colton, please state your name and precinct number.
Bob Colton, Precinct Five. Can someone give me the deficit without any support? How much is the deficit without putting any money into it, in the water?
Would anybody be able to answer that question? Mr. McNulty or Bill? Bill Rowe?
So it's about, for fiscal '24, Mr. Cohen, it's, it's about 1.3 million. So, yep.
You all set, Mr. Cohen? All right, next up is Mr. Guerin.
Jim Guerin, Precinct Six. I have a question, again, about PFAs. The federal government now has reduced the limits to four parts per trillion, or talking about it anyway. I'm wondering whether that's been mandated.
So those are, federal government, EPA proposed draft regulations like about a month ago, and it's expected they're gonna pass, four parts per trillion. We're currently operating under a 20-part-per-trillion standard with Massachusetts, so it's dropped significantly. They're expected to become final by the end of the year, December. We'll have to deal with that.
So they will be mandated as, as soon as final? So what are we going to do with our water system to make sure that we meet that by the end of the year?
We'll have to see what the final regulation says as far as schedule, but...
Well, if it's four parts per trillion, what are we gonna do?
Currently, right now, all of our wells exceed that except for plain sheet, which is about a million gallons a day. So about a third of our, two-thirds of our supply is subject to this regulation.
Does the MWRA water meet that four parts per trillion?
It, it does meet it, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guerin. Anybody else? Please state your name and precinct number, please, if you question.
Paul Bellevue, Precinct Three. Water meters, are there any situations in the town where people are using water and don't have a water meter? Industrial, you know, any, any line at all? And are there any situations where a, an industrial complex or whatever would have a second meter in their housing that would do a sewer deduction? Any situations at all in the entire town?
There would be no on both. There would be no on both questions.
The answer is no. No and no. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, let's go into debate. Yes, I'm sorry. Karen Clip, please, this is for technical questions. Please rise and state your name and precinct number, please.
Karen Clip, Precinct Gate. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to our superintendent. You know that you're gonna have to decrease the PSAs. Have you figured out how you're gonna do that and what kind of money or equipment we're talking? Are we, are you putting money away for that?
So currently, if you were here in the fall, I think I remember you here, we passed a $5.6 million water treatment expansion to the Money Pond source, which is the only source that was above 20 at the time. And so that's in design currently and probably under construction in about less than a year. So that source will be taken care of. The rest of it is premature to, you know, we'd wanna wait for the regulations to be final before we went ahead and spent money on it, but I, I am beginning planning on sort of a master plan for PFAS.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Murphy? All right, question's been moved and seconded, seconded by Scott Carrara, I believe. This is the cutoff debate. All right, by voice vote, all those in favor of cutting off the debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Now we're gonna vote on Article Ten, the Water Department Enterprise Fund Budget. All right. All right, listen, just make sure it gets up on the screen. Are we all set? Okay, please vote now. All right, Article 11, do I have a, this one's going to be dismissed. Do I have a motion to dismiss? Who made the motion? Motion to dismiss Article 11. Okay, we'll take it from the maker. Steve Cavy, is there a second by? Second, second, okay. John Insavino. All right, by voice vote only, this is for Article 11, it was dismissed. All those in favor of dismissing Article 11, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 11 now is dismissed. All right, on Article 12, I have to recuse myself, I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Stoughton Media Access Corporation. The deputy moderator, Kamel Druze, is going to step in.
All right, so Article 12, Cable Public Access Enterprise Fund, appropriate for FY '24 cable costs, found on page 15. Mr. Nocian?
That the town vote in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 F and a half, to appropriate the sum of $467,385 to fund the Cable Public Access Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2024. With $467,385 to be raised from FY 2024 Cable Public Access Enterprise Fund revenue. This is a correction to what is actually written in the book, there's a typo, but I've read the correct motion.
And it's being presented by Mr. Rowe? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Insavino, I think.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Moderator, Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. So we, this is again, is an enterprise fund. We pay for cable public access. We collect money from two providers, Comcast and Verizon, based on the number of users of the town. And then we hire out our subcontractor, Stoughton Media Access Corp. And we pay them a budgeted amount, we pay them monthly. And that amount is $467,385. And that went up a little bit from prior fiscal years because we have a new contract with Comcast. They went from, three, let's see, they went from 3.3% per user to 5% that we get. So, and there's no change in the Verizon contract as yet, we are negotiating negotiations with them. So the estimated revenue would have been $519,317 based on the analysis, because the increase in Comcast and leaving Verizon roughly the same. And we did a 10% margin for overestimation, $51,932, so that brings the estimated revenues down to $467,385. Thank you.
And the Finance Committee report?
Finance Committee voted nine to one to accept and recommend to town meeting Article 12.
Any technical questions? Yes, sir.
Jim Guerin, precinct six. I'd like to table this article for about three weeks. I understand it's going to be a meeting by the Select Board to discuss this SMAC, and I'd like to hear the results of that meeting before, before we discuss this. Thank you.
So a motion to table has, a motion to table this has been moved and seconded. So we have to, we vote? All right, we will do it by a voice vote to table this for approximately three weeks. Do we need to table, to table this until another determination of time to hear it? So those in favor of tabling this motion, say aye.
Voice vote?
Aye.
Eric Coleman, precinct five. Do you need a time certain on this as opposed to whenever?
You said three weeks.
Well, you said approximately, or?
Do, let's, let's answer this, so, yes, I'll recognize the town manager.
Just be advised, Madam Moderator, that failure to fund this account means we can't pay them in this budget session. Town meeting will be over. This is a straight pass-through from Verizon, I believe it's Verizon, to SMAC. We're just a pass-through. If we don't fund this article tonight, if we table it, we will not have the ability to pay SMAC what they do.
Able to fund them. This budget doesn't go into effect till July...
I don't think that's a, this is not a debatable issue.
I understand, this is a correction. Number one is, the Board of Selectmen was at that meeting, had cable here, and they said they'd back in 60 days, if I wasn't mistaken. Oh, yes, yes, sir. 45 days. That should fall in this week.
This is, town council is telling me that this is not a debatable topic, so we need to have a voice vote on the motion to table.
Wait a minute, Ms. Chairman. We're talking here, the town manager said he won't be able to pay them. This budget, it's in, we already appropriated this money last year till July, July 1st, that budget goes in. We're going to be voting this back within two weeks or some weeks. There is, there is a meeting, it should be taking place very shortly, because the 45 days is almost up. And I'd like to know what they're planning to do, they called a meeting. It should be, 45 days is in this rank, if you check your calendar.
I'm going to recognize town council to help guide us on the procedure here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the meeting, the motion that was made and seconded is to lay on the table. Now, someone's going to have to make a motion to take it off the table later in the meeting. The underlying motion to lay on the table was not debatable. We've gone a little far astray from that now, but that's what town meeting needs to vote on. So if this passes, it's on the table until someone takes it off the table. So we'll need a vote now on that, and then it'll stay on the table until someone makes a motion to take it back. And that could be at any point further in the town meeting when someone feels it's appropriate to do so. Okay, so back to you, Madam Moderator, and you can call for a vote on that motion.
So a voice vote on whether to table Article 12. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
That was pretty close.
Board of the clicker.
That was pretty hard to tell one way or the other from here, so we're going to use our clickers and do a vote. Again, we're voting on the motion to table this article until the point that someone requests and we vote to untable it. And we will need a two-thirds vote in order to table this motion. We'll need two-thirds voting affirmatively. While they're making a chart for that, feel free to talk amongst yourselves. We are ready with the motion to table. Remember that this needs a two-thirds affirmative in order to pass, so press one for yes, two for no, and three to abstain. So the vote to table was 45 yes, 80 no, and three abstentions, so that did not receive the two-thirds vote needed to table it. So we will continue as we had been with a period of technical questions.
Peter Murphy, precinct two. Do we know if SMAC has resolved their inner fighting with their board? Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no other technical questions, we're moving on to a period of pro and con Mr. Cohen?
They're supposed to be taking a vote. They voted a cast of officers seven months ago, and they're going to finally, after seven months, take a vote on their, I think it's their Board of Directors they have. But I'd like to know, as I say, it took seven months for them to get to this point. So the ninth, over cable at 7 o'clock, they are going to take a vote on the...
Mr. Cohen, could you phrase this in your support or non-support for the article?
Well, I support the article. I support the article, but on a side note, cable, I received an email, because I belong to the group there, and I was notified that, seven months ago, they held up their...
I think that we're going to move on to others. Thank you for voicing your opinion on the article. Other pro and con statements? Question has been moved and seconded, and seeing no one, do we need to? There's no one waiting, but, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right, the ayes have it on that one. So we are now moving on to the vote on the main motion, the motion on the floor. One for yes, two for no, three for abstain. So the vote is 101 yes, 24 no, and four abstentions, so the motion passes. Thank you. There have been some requests that we take a quick recess for 10 minutes. Do we have a voice vote on that? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're not going to do clickers on taking a recess. 10 minutes and then be back.
One, one Fox, would you be a favor, see if any town meeting reps are out in the... Can you ask people to come in? All right, we got to get moving here.
No breaks.
I know, bad, I know. Who asked for that break? All right. Just a reminder, drinking only water in the auditorium here. Nothing stronger than water. No eating, no snacks, no entrees, no hot meals. Just clear water. All right, I think we're going to start.
Question of the floor.
Okay, we're just talking about that. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. We're going to take a quorum count, just to be certain as we go forward. Are all the precinct chairs here? Okay, all the precinct chairs? Can the precinct chairs, I mean, they're all over, yeah, they are over the place. Well taken, sir, thank you. One at a time, please. Okay, we just got to set it up. We'll do a quorum count by clicker. You're lucky to be in precinct two. Right. Yeah, okay, we're going to check for a quorum, it just takes a minute to set it up. How are we doing there? Are we ready? Okay, this is for the quorum count. Do we have a question? He's got to be here. All we need is a quorum, then we can go forward. Okay, we ready to vote? Please vote now. Please vote now. Yes, no, abstention. Yeah, everything counts. All right, all right, all right. All right, do we, we do have a quorum. The numbers do satisfy the quorum of 85. All right? If you need help with the math, let me know, we'll get you some assistance. Ah, you got to be, you got to be here. All right. All right, Article 13, reauthorization of revolving funds, that appears on page 17. Please turn to page 17 in the warrant books. Okay, if we're ready, Mr. Von Anokian, please... Okay, if we're ready, Mr. Von Anokian, please read the motion.
That the town vote pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three and a half, as most recently amended, to establish fiscal year limitations on expenditures from the revolving funds established by the general bylaws, Section forty-two, to revolving funds with such limitations to remain applicable from fiscal year to fiscal year until such time as they are later amended, as set forth in the warrant, and to carry forward any monies remaining in such funds from year to year unless otherwise transferred by town meeting. Fund, count on aging, spending limit would be fifty thousand dollars. Recreation limit would be two hundred thousand dollars. That was recently voted by the finance committee, just as a side note. Geographic information systems, fifteen thousand dollars limit. Youth commission, fifty thousand dollars spending limit. Community events, ten thousand dollars spending limit. Conservation commission, fifty thousand dollars spending limit. Board of health, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars spending limit. Stormwater, fifty thousand dollars spending limit. Compost bin, rain barrel, twenty-three hundred dollars spending limit.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Cynthia. It's been seconded, the motion's been proposed and seconded by Cynthia Walsh. Can I have the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article thirteen.
Anybody here from municipal regs that want to read the report? If not, I'll read it. I'll just go ahead and read it. Municipal regula, regulations report, voted five to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article thirteen. All right, uh, this is on Article thirteen. Mr. Rowe, did you want to make a little presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bill Rowe, town accountant. So, revolving funds, that's another statute, forty-four fifty-three and a half, which allows the department or, or board to collect money, and that money does not go into the general fund, overall town pot. It's set aside to provide programs, and there's, um, and that money, uh, but each year, town meeting has to set a spending limit. So, the, um, the department or board that's in charge of the revolving fund is allowed to spend within those, spend up to those spending limits, or the available balance in the particular revolving fund, whichever is less. And there's a table on page one oh six, which outlines the activity. By the way, if you haven't figured it out by now, you know, I, I, I'm not lugging two books around. If, if you're using a tablet or, or the laptop, um, there's a, there's a table of contents on page six, as you know, and, and the backup is on, uh, table of contents on page nine. If you add ten to the pages that are in the book, when you're navigating in the PDF, it'll take you pretty, pretty close to where you want to go, so. So, page one oh six has a table of the activity in each of the revolving funds, and be happy to take any questions. Oh, and by the way, uh, the chair mentioned that, uh, the recreation revolving fund, that's a fifty thousand dollar increase over what it is this year. Um, the department does have the funds available, but they had cost of programs that go up, and they, they wanted to, they expanded into some new programs, so they'd like to carry that, um, two hundred thousand dollar limit into fiscal twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Any technical questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Any pro con debate or comments? Okay, I didn't see any debate anyway, so we will go right to the, uh, voting. This is on Article thirteen. Can we bring it up on the screen? I see it's up on the screen. We ready to vote? Okay, please vote accordingly, one, two, or three. Motion passes, one sixteen yes, one no, one abstention. All right, let's move on. Ms. Walsh, you have a question?
No, I have a motion.
You have a motion.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. I'd like to move to dismiss for, um, lack of contracts, Article fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And that's the end of my motion.
Second.
Okay, um, there was a second, who seconded it?
Steve Kaby.
Steve Kaby, thank you, Mr. Kaby. All right, uh, just to, for down front table, Cynthia Walsh made a motion to dismiss Article fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So, I count one, two, three, four, five dismissals, and there was seconded. Excuse me? No, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-one's consent agenda, we passed that. All right, so the motion is, was by voice vote only. All those in favor of those dismissals, can I have a? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none? The motion passes to dismiss those articles. Thank you. Yes. Okay, these are the ones for dismissal. Article fourteen, Article sixteen, Article seventeen, Article eighteen, and Article nineteen. Six, uh, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. That's what you said, Cynthia, right? Yes. Yeah, there's five. Everybody good with those? All right, so let's move on. So, that brings us up to Article fifteen. Article fifteen is halfway down the page, on page eighteen, collective bargaining, fire station, fire union, I'm sorry, fire union. Can I have the motion from, it's going to have to be from Mr. Kaby, you want to make that motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, move that the town vote to implement the terms of collective, of a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Stoughton and I A F F Local one fif, uh, fifteen twelve for the period of fiscal year twenty-four through fiscal year twenty-six, with the funds needed for fiscal year twenty-four to be appropriated under Article twenty-six.
Okay, um, been made by Mr. Kaby, seconded by Cynthia Walsh. Finance committee report, please. Can you report it?
The finance committee voted zero to ten to accept and recommend to town meeting Article fifteen. The motion failed. Finance committee, uh, voted ten to zero to add the note, no information was presented to the committee at the time of our public hearings.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, presentation, Mr. Coulter or Steve?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I'll, I defer to, to our town manager.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Please introduce yourself to the town meeting reps.
Deanna Chatsko, human resources. So, um, out on the front table, there should have been, um, there were, we actually have two MOAs tonight, so there would be two separate, one for Article fifteen, and I believe the other is for Article twenty. This first one is for our Stoughton firefighters, and I just want, on the cover sheet, if you have it, I just have a, a quick correction. The, at the, in the chart above, under pro board, pro board certifications max, under fiscal twenty-five, it says sixty-three thousand. That amount should be changed to thirty-two thousand, and then the same in fiscal twenty-six, that should be thirty-two thousand. And the very last line at the bottom, where it says the fiscal twenty-five new professional board certification stipend, it should say up to five certifications, not ten, with a max of five hundred, um, total per year per firefighter. So, and that was, um, in the fiscal twenty-five on the very bottom. That's just the correction on that sheet. Um, I believe they also, the, um, local fifteen twelve is spelled out incorrectly. But as far as the contract went, we, um, we negotiated a three-year of fiscal twenty-four through twenty-six. The finance committee had closed their public hearings at the time that this was ratified by the union and the select board, so that's why they didn't get a chance to vote on it. Um, the good thing is, we're not looking for any additional funding in fiscal twenty-four, so what's in the budget is going to cover this MOA. They did sign for a two, two, and a two, so a three-year, two percent each, uh, each year, and there are a few other items that do not take place in the fiscal twenty-four budget. Any monetary items, the firefighters, they knew the situation we were in, they agreed to hold off, so the, there are items that will not take place until twenty-five. Um, there are some minor changes in it as far as wording, just to clarify wording, and then there are a few other monetary items. The breakdown does show the cost for each fiscal year, and you'll see at the bottom, additional funding needed for twenty-four is zero.
Thank you very much. All right, any technical questions?
Jim Guerin, precinct six. Has the finance committee had a chance to review the MOA on this?
Can we get an answer to that, please?
Finance committee voted ten to zero to add the note, no information was presented to the committee at the time of our public hearings.
And you haven't reviewed it since then?
This was just distributed tonight.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Right. Uh, any other technical questions? Mr. Joe, Joe, go ahead, Joe Scardino, if you can rise, or can someone help him with the microphone? Now, why don't someone hand him the microphone? It's on, Joe. It's on.
I think everybody heard that. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to, uh, Ms. Chatsko, she says, if I understand it correctly, that there's no budget impact, but are we adding any police? I'm sorry, strike that. Are we adding any fire, um... Individuals to our, uh, and if so, how would we, how would the numbers be the same as they were last year?
Could someone answer that?
Well, the, the numbers aren't the same as they were last year. There was a two percent put in the twenty-four budget. Um, as far as the new firefighters that are added, that's not part of this MOA, that's part of the fiscal twenty-four budget. It's not, there's no new additional firefighters added in the MOA, not, not contractually.
One more question. So, a new firefighter approved, that this town meeting would be added in what fiscal year?
If, the new firefighters are in, included, there's, I believe there's two new firefighters included in the fiscal twenty-four budget. Their salaries are included in the fiscal twenty-four budget, in addition to any equipment they receive or anything like that would also be included in that budget.
Again, my confusion is, you stated that this is a zero-dollar transaction, so, um, but we are, we are adding firefighters.
But they're in the budget, they're in the article for the fiscal twenty-four operating budget, that their salaries are in that, included in that.
So, they're not capped by the MOA? If they're, are they in or out? I thought I heard earlier that they were outside the, this MOA.
They're not, they're not addressed in the MOA at all, the additional firefighters. This is just, this is the benefit for all firefighters, it's a two percent rate increase. The firefighters that are added to the fiscal twenty-four budget have that two percent rate increase incorporated.
So, if I was a firefighter hired in August one, would I get two percent?
You would come in at the starting rate on their grid, their fiscal twenty-four starting rate.
And what would my second, my, my second year raise be covered by?
That would be fiscal twenty-five. The rate increases take place July first, so fiscal twenty-five, when that budget is done, that two percent will be incorporated into the fire department's fiscal twenty-five budget, along with any other monetary stipends or anything that they received in this MOA.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other technical questions? Seeing none, let's, oh, I'm sorry, Sandra Souza, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Sandra Souza, precinct one. The, um, increases are two percent over the next three years. Looking back, the increases were two percent, one and a half, and one and three quarters. Is the two percent, and through you, Mr. Moderator, I'm not sure who would answer this, but is that two percent consistent throughout, um, other increases for the next three years for employees? We, this is our first contract that we've seen, so we have no idea what's coming.
Yes, so I can tell you that the firefighters have a signed three-year deal. Um, the clerical, which is coming up, is also the same thing, it's a, a two percent. Um, we've pretty much made it clear in negotiations that it, that's what we have to offer at this point. Um, we actually have two other MOAs that are ratified both, um, by the unions, and they will be going to the select board after town meeting, and they will appear in the fall. Um, and those are also the same. And, uh, we have another one that actually we just met with the other day, and their union is ratifying now, which will also be a third that will go, I mean, we have eight contracts, one of which is signed, and we've moving pretty quickly on getting the rest. The intent is to have all of these MOAs before December thirty-first, um, to, to the select board, so we can have it ready for the town meeting prior.
Okay, my question was more along the lines of, you know, we're looking at two percent for the firefighters, we don't want...
Everybody will get the same.
Right, we would want equity or parity among the other unions. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Mr. Zemanian, please rise, state your name and your precinct number, please, and your question.
Mark Zemanian, precinct one. Through you, Mr. Moderator, and, and I apologize, I'm, I'm just getting a chance to review this, we received it tonight. In Article four of the MOA, it struck the words Massachusetts Boston or Brockton Fire Academy, and just change it to a Fire Academy that meets or exceeds pro board certification standards. Is there a reason?
That opens it up for the fire, for the fire chief to have a, a broader range of where he's, he doesn't, he's not restricted to those two academies.
Okay, so will the Fire Academy be in Massachusetts or not?
Um, I, the fire chief can answer that.
Because this kind of states that it wouldn't necessarily...
Through you, Mr. Moderator, Fire Chief Michael Carroll. Uh, so this has been, this has been an issue ongoing for, for a number of years. The Mass Fire Academy, which we're, we're previously regulated to, um, has a six-to-eight month waiting list. Uh, we were just actually, we were able to put two firefighters through the Brockton Academy. Uh, multiple municipalities, other agencies are opening up their Fire Academy recruit classes. We also had one member who just came through from the DOD, Department of Defense, as a firefighter one-two certified. Now, if we'd gone by the old contract, he was not going to be approved and to be able to be used right away. So, this gets us off, we're covered under the pro board one-two, firefighter one-two, and it allows us to, a lot more latitude to get people on the trucks a lot quicker.
Does it maintain the high standards?
It maintains, sometimes it maintains more than. So, the DOD is a thirteen-week recruit class rather than a, a ten-week.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Any other technical questions? Seeing none, let's move on, pro con debate or comments. Pat Colburn, please rise, state your name and your precinct number, please.
Pat Colburn, precinct four. I'm going to apologize, but I'm really irritated. I thought we'd seen the last of the days that we get a contract on the night of town meeting. We have talked about this repeatedly for years. The unions have to understand that the contracts have to be done in time for finance committee to review them. There were no public hearings. I haven't read these. I'm not in the habit of voting on something I have not read. I spent my time trying to keep up with all the other things that were on the table that I had to get through till tonight. So, I don't like being put in a position where I potentially have to get, you know, go against the employees. I have nothing against the firefighters, I appreciate everything they do, but this is not the proper procedure. We've bypassed hearings, nobody's had a, a public hearing on this. I haven't even read it, so I'm leaning towards... I haven't even read it, so I'm leaning towards voting no, which I don't want to do, but I also don't want to approve this. So I don't know what to do, and I'm just expressing my frustration. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Colburn.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Tom Coulter?
Your point is well-taken, I respect that. I'll take the blame for that. I didn't arrive here till December 12th, and all eight agreements, seven agreements, were not negotiated because they were waiting, as they should have, for a new town manager. So we got, we now have in principle agreements with all seven. The only reason we're bringing these two is because it was three weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, that these were ratified. We have labor harmony right now, which is something not all towns have. We worked as fast as we could work getting these agreements to the point they're in, these two. We could have tried to bring the other two that we've got agreement on, we didn't do that, and the Finance Committee was very clear on this, and so I blame no one, except for we got going in the process very late. We reached agreement with the Board of Selectmen the other night, that no future MOAs will come before the body, this body, unless they're submitted by December 31st. So literally four months, three months, before we go to town meeting. Your point is well-taken, it's just that we were working hard and fanning to the employees. We've got, one of these contracts expired a year ago and was unsigned, that we're getting, that we're voting on tonight. And the firefighters, we reached agreement in two meetings. Your labor unions in this town understand the position we're in, we've explained it in great detail, and they've stepped up to the plate. So the last thing I would, I would hope that happens is that this body doesn't reward that loyalty to the town by making them pay for us starting the process late, because I arrived late. I didn't arrive till December 15th.
If I may, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, go ahead.
Very briefly. I appreciate that, and again, I don't want to disrupt the harmony, it's wonderful to hear that, and I'll be the first to sing kumbaya. If I have your word, and it sounds like I got it, this is not going to happen to us again, so we won't be rewarded by approving these by having it happen again. We will have it long ahead of time.
You have my word.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you both. Mr. Dave Laurie, please state your name and your precinct number.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, David Laurie, Precinct 6. Through you, I just want to say that I'm in full agreement with the previous speaker, you know, getting it on the same night, it was, it was kind of a shock to me, and I'm on the Finance Committee. I just wanted to know, is it disruptive to the process at all, or is it even allowed to freeze the... Because it seemed like a reasonable agreement, actually, on the surface of it, without even digging in, but can it be held as a frozen document until a special town meeting later in the year to kick off from that point in time when the Finance Committee can actually vet this thing? I'm just wondering how much disruption that adds to the...
Well, I'm not going to take a question at this time. It's pro-con debate, either you're for it or against it.
Thank you.
Or comments. Okay. Cynthia Walsh?
Move the previous question, please.
Okay, Cynthia Walsh made the motion to move the question, that means cutoff debate.
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct 3.
I'm sorry. Cynthia Walsh of Precinct 3. As she moved the question, and who seconded it? Bob Combe, Precinct 5. This is the cutoff debate by voice vote. All those in favor of the cutoff debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we're going to move right to voting, and this is on Article 15, collective bargaining fire union. Are we ready to vote? We're ready. Well, that's good. Please vote accordingly, one, two, or three. Article 15, the motion passes, 103 yes, 15 no, three abstentions. Moderator declares out of vote. All right, now we also, moving on, that was Article 15, we dismiss 16, 17, 18, 19. Now we're at Article 20, 20, that's on page 21. That's collective bargaining fear. Finance Committee had a positive recommendation, right? That's what I see? No?
We have no...
Oh, I'm sorry, you just referred it. My bad, my bad.
Are you referring to Article 20?
Excuse me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my, I jumped down a little bit. Okay, at this point, I have a motion from Steve Caby, please.
Thank you. I'd like to apologize to the body, there is a typo in the proposed motion, I'm going to read it as it was intended, it's a very small typo, though. I propose, I'm sorry, I move that the town votes to implement the terms of a collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Stoughton and the Town Hall Employees Association for the period of fiscal year '23 through fiscal year '25, with the funds needed for fiscal year '24 to be appropriated under Article 26.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who seconded it? Carolyn Campbell, thank you. All right, at this point, who's going to present? Deanne?
Okay, so this is the Town Hall Employees Association, it's a contract that expired last June 30th, so it's for fiscal '23 through fiscal '25. These are the people that you deal with on a daily basis, coming into Town Hall, that collect your taxes, do your abatements, birth certificates, those are the people that fall under this agreement. As far as, the main part of this agreement is, it is a two, two, and two. It's, a new grid was put in place, the same grid that was put in place for the Public Works last November. It's a four-step grid, and the longevity was integrated into the base pay. So you'll see the scale on the back, the scale on the back is the exact scale that the DPW has, with the exception of, the DPW only has four grades, and the Thia Union has six grades, so it's a little bit, but the concept of creating the grid was the exact same. As far as funding for fiscal '23, we are, we can cover that within the fiscal '23 budget, and when budgeting for fiscal '24, we planned ahead and we budgeted correctly. So if somebody looks, just to give a heads up when we get forward to the actual budget, if you see that there's longevity still in the fiscal '24 budget, it is, there is a line item for longevity, but that is being used when it comes to the salaries for this, because it's now been integrated into the base pay. You also might see that it looks like someone's getting a larger rate increase and not getting 2%, and that's correct, because we budgeted for fiscal '23 and '24 rate increase, so it would be, it might show as a 4% rate increase. As far as other benefits with this, there are no other money items involved. We've added Juneteenth and done some clarified wording on sick buyback, there's a lot of housekeeping when it comes to, and it really boils down to clarifying things, because some of the articles were a little bit hard to read and hard to follow. So it's really just a two, two, and two, a slight change on the sick buyback and the new wage scale put in place. Longevity will no longer be, they did not take their longevity in December of fiscal '23, so that money is still available in the budget, which is why we do not need any additional funding. And we also do not need additional funding in fiscal '24.
Okay, thank you. At this point in time, before I take technical questions, can I hear from the Finance Committee their reports?
The Finance Committee voted 0 to 10 to accept and recommend the town meeting, Article 20, the motion failed. Finance Committee voted 10 to 0 to add the note, no information presented to the committee at the time of our public hearings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vaughn. All right, at this point in time, technical questions? Go ahead, Dave, please introduce yourself, name and precinct.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, David Laurie, Precinct 6. So during the technical question portion of the article, I want to ask the same question. What would happen if, in good conscience, everybody, you know, on the surface says, looks like a reasonable article, that I would otherwise vote yes, but I'd feel more comfortable if I could have the Finance Committee vet this thing, because it's a comprehensive document that's very hard to digest? What is the impact if this was held off until a special town meeting? If people said, I want to vote no, but it came back as it is, as it's currently negotiated, without any changes? Is that possible, or does it have to...
I...
Or if it's a no, does it force the negotiations to be reopened?
I believe, and Attorney Winner may be able to answer, I believe that we would be, have an unfair labor bargaining practice if we didn't move it, if it was ratified prior to town meeting.
Sure, Mr. Winner.
So, Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting, my answer to that question is that it opens the door to the potential that they could file an unfair labor practice complaint. That's not a guarantee that they will, but we negotiated in good faith towards a contract, a contract that has now been voted and signed through the Board of Select, the Select Board, and it's contingent upon this meeting taking it up and voting it. Now, if we fail to implement and effectuate that vote, it leaves us exposed to a complaint that they may perceive that as an unfair labor practice. Again, no guarantee, and we don't know if they're willing to wait or not, those are things outside of our control, but as a pure legal principle, we made a promise, and if we don't keep it, they have the right to complain about that.
Okay, so there is, okay, so I think I'm hearing that there's a potential impact, depending on what happens after. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, technical questions? Carolyn Campbell?
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, Precinct 4. I just have a question about how are, about positions and how they're allocated into which union? For example, if this is the Town Hall Employees Association, I just don't understand why, like, a licensed clinical social worker for the Council of Aging would be in this union and not in the professional association, Employees Union?
So this union's been in existence since, long before I came, but in the 60s, I know I was the union president at one point in time. And this union was in effect until, I believe, it was around 1989, 1990, and what happened was anybody that wasn't in a union created a union, and it was called, and that's the Stoughton Professional Employees Administrative Association, which is the SPA union. So you're 100% correct, the nurses fall in the clerical union, the custodians fall in the clerical union, it's, it's every, we have people at the water department, the fire department, the police department, everybody's in here. And then as far as, even with the SPA union, there's admins, there's secretaries in that union too, so it's, there's really, in my opinion, they should just merge together and be one. It would make, it would be one less contract that we'd have to deal with, and they both pretty much have the same contract, but, or the benefits in the contract, but as far as an answer to that, it was long before my time.
I was just curious, because I guess as a follow-up question, is when was the Council on Aging social worker position created?
That position has been around now for probably 15 years, maybe? It's been a while.
Okay, thank you.
This person actually started out under the VNA, and then moved over to the Council on Aging.
So which is why it probably stayed in that contract.
Right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Anzavino, then we'll get to you, Jim.
Just a quick one.
Name and precinct number, please.
Yeah, John Anzavino, Precinct 4. I haven't moved, still there. But, first of all, did you say the contract, or what we have here, is subject to appropriation by town meeting, correct?
There's no additional funding needed, it would be what's...
No, that's not what, the question was, when this is signed, or when it was negotiated, is it subject to town meeting funding it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The only other question I had for you is, the FY '23 total was actually more than FY ' '24? Could you, could you just explain why FY '24 is the lowest of the three?
Sure, because...
Thank you.
We had some long-term employees that were in fiscal '23 that have already retired or are retiring, and they're being replaced with people that are coming in, and their salaries are much lower, which, and those, those people also had the higher longevity step, and the people coming in don't have any longevity step, so there's a, that's why you see the decrease.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Bill Rhodes, did you want to add something?
Just to the previous speaker, Mr. Moderator, Town Council, correct me if I'm misinterpreting this, but, Chapter 150E, Section 7, Paragraph B, says that the, the town shall, or the body shall submit to the appropriate legislative body within 30 days after the date on which the agreement is actually executed by both parties, requests for appropriation. So, you know, the executive and the town manager are kind of obligated to submit this to the body, because it's been ratified. Either that, or they have to hold a special town meeting within 30 days, so, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Mr. Guerin, please state your name and precinct number.
Jim Guerin, Precinct 6. I've heard a lot of talk here tonight about unfair practices and probably some litigation possible. I think it's unfair to bring these things to town meeting, eat night of town meeting, and I feel that I can't vote for any of these things that arrive on meeting night and vote for them with a clear head, because I don't know what they're all about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is Mr. Murphy?
Peter Murphy, Precinct 2. Through you, Mr. Moderator, can somebody explain to me, Article 7, amend Section 6 coffee break by amending section as follows? Can somebody explain to me what this paragraph actually means?
Could someone answer this question? Again, you want to repeat that paragraph number?
It's Article 7, which is longevity, uniform, special license, coffee breaks, working out of classification. It says amend Section 6, coffee breaks by amending section as follows, it's on page 5.
Yes, it's, it's just, it's, there's no change in it, it's clarification, because the way it was originally worded, it did not spell out the proper way people should be charged off if they take off time, and that's, it was just reworded for that reason, to clarify it.
Could you explain to me the rewording?
So, so, in the last contract, it was not done in this one, the prior town manager negotiated, employees receive a 15-minute break twice a day, and it was negotiated that the afternoon 15-minute break would be eliminated, and that the employees would receive one hour per week of comp time, or time accrued to be put with their earned time. So, and that, that gets credited to the employees. So when this was put, when it was written, it wasn't clear to people as far as if you were out sick, or if you were out on vacation, and some people were saying, well, you know, if I'm out sick, I still get paid for the day, so it was, it was just a way of clarifying the whole scenario. It's, it's not changing anything that was put in in the last MOA, and it's just, it's just changing the wording of it. It's not, there's nothing changed in the concept, though.
I think this goes to what a previous speaker, previous speakers have said, we're getting information, changes, and we really don't have a chance to read it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Coulter?
Thank you, Dee. Dee and I have worked side by side in these contracts since December 15th. I noted my agreement on the ladies' point to town meeting, we should have got them to you earlier, we could have, or we would have if we could have. We asked the body, the union body, to negotiate in good faith and to expedite this as fast as we could, and they did their part. They did their part. And every single one of these contracts were negotiated with the leadership and the advice of council, Labor Council, and we finished them with labor harmony. I appreciate that you got them at the last minute, and I understand that's not a new event, that you often get them at the last minute. It won't happen next year, but to vote this down would be saying that our town employees who worked hard to get to this point weren't worthy of that effort. I would strongly encourage this body to pass these to CBA, not CBA's, MOAs, and we know how to fix it, you've told us how to fix it, I've given my word that we fixed it, but it would be bad faith from our labor relations position to turn our backs on these things, that they worked very hard to get ratified. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coulter. Pat Colburn?
Pat Colburn, Precinct 4. Pat Colburn, precinct four. My question, uh, through to Deanna, I'm sorry, I wouldn't be able to pronounce your last name, so I'm not trying to be informal. It's Ms. Chatsko. Uh, my question is on the funding for 2023. I assume we're going retro back to July 1st?
Yes.
Is the reason that costs us nothing? Do we also have 2% in the '23 budget?
There was 1.75, um, but the longevity was also budgeted, and, um, the, there are many, because of these, these people fall in all the different departments, that there are other positions that may have not been funded. Um, accounting has run the numbers, and they will not, they will need no additional funding. They will be able to absorb it bottom line.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that was to technical questions? Uh, Sandra Souza, please rise, state your name and your precinct number, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sandra Souza, precinct one. Um, my question is in regards to the sick leave buyback.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if I understand this, we basically allow them a maximum 250 days, but not less than 100?
So if you have under 100 days, you, you receive nothing for a sick leave buyback?
You lose it.
And then it goes, if you have over 100 days, then, right now, it's 3750, and it's changing to 50?
Okay. That was my question, because it said delete three paragraphs, but it doesn't show what's deleted, so I didn't know what it was previous to this.
It was 3750 prior.
And now it's $50, correct?
Okay.
All right. So that's a maximum of like 12,500 or something?
Um, it depends, if, I mean, there's very, right now, I can tell you, in this group, I think there's only three people that have over 100 days. So, I mean, if you're going from somebody that has as many years of service as I have, that's a different story when you get up into the 3, 400 days. Um, but right now, we're not looking at that.
But the maximum we paid out would be 250 days, according to this formula?
Uh, 250 days, I think, is the new...
Right. At $50 a day?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Cynthia Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. Move the previous question.
Seconded by, uh, first of all, Cynthia Walsh moved the question. That means cutoff debate. Seconded by Scott Carrara. This would be by voice vote. All those in favor of cutting off the debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none. We're going to move right to the vote, and we are talking about Article 20, fear, collective bargaining. Are we ready to go? Okay. Please vote.